And if we get our microphones turned on, please. Start with a presentation by Corey Boyer from the Forum Municipal Fund. Forum Fund. Everything you wanted to know and then some.
Exactly. I'm gonna leave some cards at this end if you want to pass them around.
Okay.
Who I am or who I am. Okay, well, I appreciate the chance to get out here tonight. This is a word of warning, I'm battling spring allergies, so I brought my water keys. I have an episode, but I think I can get through this, it'll be good. So just wanted to come out tonight, I know you've seen some information from us and Corey had shared from when I met with her, whenever that was, five, six weeks ago, some information about the fund. And I'm guessing maybe there are some questions, but I thought what I would do is just briefly go through. Did you all get this presentation? Thought I would just go through this briefly, not to touch on everything in here, but maybe just highlight a few things that I thought might be of benefit for your knowledge, if you consider the fund and how it's geared and how it works with cities and everything that the league has developed here. So if you turn in, I notice there aren't pages in here, it's only five pages. Let me look through this, and the first page regarding the Forum Fund Program Overview. It's a couple of things here, so the league started, or established the Forum Fund back in 1987. And it was established specifically for public entities in Minnesota, so it's here really specifically for the investment, cash investment needs for Minnesota cities. Anything that cities are restricted to by Minnesota statute, the Forum Fund is also restricted to. So we have to follow the same statutes, when we're pooling dollars and investing them, we have to follow the same rules that cities individually have to follow. So in that sense, everything that the Forum Fund is doing by statute is automatically approved for any city in the state. There's some information about PMA Financial, we were hired in 2007 to administer the fund for the league. They hired PMA. US Bank is the banking custodian, so they're behind the scenes doing all the banking work for the fund. And then RBC is also involved as a sub-adviser to the fund. So there's different parties that are involved in the overall management of the fund. Just some other items there, we do bond proceeds work, we are municipal advisors, so we can work with municipal bond proceeds as well as any operating dollars, so that's, either way, we can work with those dollars. Currently, there are over 400 participants in the fund, and the fund is available to any Minnesota municipality. So of these 400, over 300 are cities, but there are other types of public entities in the fund. We've got some water districts, we've got park districts, we've got some townships. So it's open to any of those, but really Minnesota cities have been kind of the sole user of the fund over the years. The next page gets into some of the specific types of pooled products. So when we talk about a local government investment pool, which is what Forum is considered by statute, it's a pool of funds that local governments bring together, and then it gets invested by a professional management team, and so that's the concept, is that it's pooling those funds for that buying power that the larger dollars bring. And so it gets pooled together, and this next page too talks about the different pooled products in the fund. So you've got the 4M and the 4M+. The only real difference, 4M is liquid money. So the day it goes in, it's available to the city to bring to their local bank and use as they need. So it's day one liquidity. 4M+ simply has a 14-day aging period, once it's been in the 4M+ fund for 14 days, it's fully liquid. Both of them are considered on money market, I guess it's the easiest way to figure those. It maintains a $1 share value, so if you put a dollar in, you're gonna get a dollar out, and then plus any interest earnings that you've received on those dollars. Interest is paid out on each of those on a monthly basis. And then at the bottom of page two, it talks about the term series investment pools. Those are another pooled product, so cities can bring their monies together, it gets invested, but in those, it actually has a fixed rate and fixed maturity, so it acts more like a CD, but it is a pooled product, and so it's not subject to some of the same rules that maybe a CD might be subject to with FDIC and things like that. The...
What other rules, so you say the FDIC?
Yeah, so with the bank, if you're placing deposits with the bank, as you're probably familiar, if it's over 250,000, those dollars have to be collateralized. Because banks work differently than local government investment pools. Banks, when they take money in, they generally are, they have lending programs, so money's not staying at the bank most often, it's being lent out or what have you. And so because that money doesn't stay with the bank, rules require, statutes require that banks have to collateralize any deposits over 250,000 dollars. With a local government investment pool, money's being deposited, but it's staying in the pool, and it's being invested per Minnesota statute, so in effect, those investments are acting as a collateral for your participating share of the pool, but it's not really collateral specific to the city. So in other words, all the investments in the pool, as long as they're performing the way they should be, they're gonna grow, and the city's gonna benefit from your participating share in that growth. So it's just a different concept, banking versus a local government investment pool.
So how are these funds, and I was noticing on the one flyer we got here, the fund is neither insured nor guaranteed by US government, and there's no assurance the funds will be able to maintain the stable net asset valued $1 per share.
Right.
What does that mean to us?
So what that basically means, they call it in the industry, breaking the buck. And so I mentioned $1 in, $1 out, and what that means is a stable value fund, the NAV, as they call it, the net asset value of your dollar that goes in, is not gonna fluctuate. If for some reason, like when things got really bad back in 2008 and carry through basically to 2015, you probably heard about some countries that had actually negative interest rates, negative borrowing or have negative rates in the market. What can happen if markets crashed where interest rates came back down to zero or actually went negative? If you put a dollar in, but it's earning negative interest, they could, they could go below a dollar. And so if you put a dollar in, it's possible that could come down. The only way that's gonna happen though is again, if markets crash, or if there's a failure from like agency type of security or things that we're investing in. And so in that case, if it's that bad of a situation, a lot of the banks that are collateralizing your deposits, those collateral pieces are gonna be the same types of securities. So they're gonna have some of those same issues with their collateral than what we would be having here in the fund. So we can't say with 100% certainty it's gonna be a dollar value throughout time, because it could go negative. When '08 hit and interest rates basically came down to zero, we did not break the buck. And so we're able to still operate and provide some interest for cities that are in the fund, so.
Have any idea how many cities were in the fund at that time?
Pardon me?
How many cities were in the fund in 2008, do you know? Or municipalities?
I would guess there was probably, we've grown probably 30 or 40 entities in the fund since then. Probably about 350, 360 participants at that time, so.
Mary, did you have a question?
I do have a question, so this last thing you described, that's only under the term series investment pools, that the remainder of it is fully insured? Anything in the Forum or 4M+, or is that, what you explained is everything?
That would be any kind of pooled product, any, yeah, 4M+ or 4M+.
Okay, all right.
You see the $1 share price?
Yes.
On the first two?
Mm-hmm.
That would be.
Yeah.
And the disclaimer on this one, it's all Forum funds.
Okay.
Yep.
So back to the term phrase investment pools, that's the equivalent of a CD?
It acts like a CD, it's considered part of the local government investment, it's a pooled product, but the way it acts, it's got a fixed rate, fixed maturity, so it's gonna act like a CD. You know what your rate is, you know when it's gonna mature. It's just that it is a pooled product within the Forum Fund family of pooled products. And so you can put in $500, you can put in a million dollars. There's no max or minimum on those, you can do as much or as little as you want in there. Not to muddy the waters, but so some of the 4M, 4M+ and term series dollars, those will get invested in bank products. And when you're talking millions of dollars, they aren't going out and finding 250,000 chunks all over to do that, they're doing it in large block deposits with banks. Since the Forum Fund has to follow same state statutes as cities, if we're doing that, we have to get those bank deposits collateralized that are behind these products that you're investing in. So it's kind of the same yet different, if that makes sense. It's kind of hard to get into a lot.
Thank you.
The next page then gets into the fixed rate programs, and so place to look at, if there's the pooled products that we just talked about. From there then, you can get into the 4M fixed rate program. These programs would be specifically invested for the city, these are not pooled products. And so these would be like, where if you have a CD at the local bank, it'd be the same concept. It would be a security or an investment in the city's name. And this just spells out all the different securities that we're working with right now in the Forum Fixed Rate Program. And I know, I think talking with Corey, there's some CDs that you're working with now. Right now, CDs are giving us the best rates, and if they're insured or collateralized, or if they're under FDIC insurance, they're very safe. But we can, depending on cash flow needs and how much liquidity you might wanna keep, we can look at some of these other options. And so as we talk with the city, and we'll find out, you know, what type of cash flow situation are you in, how much liquidity do you need, how certain are you you won't need these funds? Do you think you might have to pull them back early? Some of those discussions might lead us to make recommendations on some of these other types of securities. But any of these, we can do, all of these obviously are allowed by state statute, but we can work with any of these with the city.
Just in your conversations, excuse me, Corey.
Yeah.
Conversations with Corey, have you guys discussed any of these different products in the fixed rate investment program at all?
Yeah, we did some overviews of different, he brought a bunch of information, and we did talk about, you know, liquidity on all of them, so.
It looks like there's a lot of options.
There is, and they all kind of, there's benefits and some things maybe that might be a better fit in certain, that's why we talk about cash flows and what you specifically might want, because when we talk agencies and treasuries, they aren't gonna provide as high a rate of return probably as like a bank product right now, but again, if you were to need, but they're gonna do better than the term series money market pools right now, so it's in between kind of a bank product and the money market. But if you have some dollars, you might wanna put out long-term, but if you're really not sure when you might need them, we'll use those a lot because they're extremely liquid. So if for some reason you had to pull it early, instead of incurring an early withdrawal penalty on a CD, we'd probably encourage maybe an agency or a treasury, because those are liquid, you can sell them pretty much same day, the treasury market is extremely liquid. Municipal securities is another option we might look at, those aren't quite as liquid as an agency or treasury, so if you're forced to sell a municipal, you might have a little hint on your principal when you try to sell that, because it's not as liquid a market, so. But again, we'll look at all this, because the municipal security's gonna give us a better rate than an agency, so there's a lot of things to look at if we consider all of these. Really from where we talked about the variety of CD products and down, on the page there, it's, PMA's broken up really into two entities, there's PMA securities, which are regulated much differently than just bank product, and so when we talk securities, that's basically agencies, treasuries, munis, some CDs are considered securities. But then down, about halfway from non-negotiable CDs on down, that's all just straight bank product, much like if you were to go to a local bank and get a CD, it's the same concept as a deposit in the city's name at a bank. So we can do either, PMA securities, we do the securities end with PMA Financial, those are bank product.
And in that, are these, when you get down to the non-negotiables, are they equivalent in rates to CDs we can get?
Well, I don't know what, we talked and I can't remember what you were looking at, but to give you an idea, because we, you know, we bid these out daily, and I can't guarantee any rates right now, obviously, but from what we've seen, like with some of the non-negotiables, right about six months now is where we, six to seven months is where we see a 2% rate. If you go up to 18 months, we were seeing rates the other day, like just under 2.5. So they go up pretty quick, but they get pretty flat. And so right now, our yield curves, they talk about it, it starts here, it goes up really quick, and then there's not much to gain by going out much longer. So we're really focused kind of in that one to three-year window right now for investable funds, because there's really not a lot to gain by going out past that, so. So again, I don't know what you're getting locally, but that's kind of gives you an idea of what we're seeing right now with the Forum Fund. And just to go back to give you an idea on the 4M Fund right now, as of today, and I should remember that you saw this, those were, 4M Fund today, I think, is like at a 1.46 or something like that, and the 4M+ was just under 1.6. There's usually about a 10 to 15 basis points difference between those two, just kind of how they operate. But so those are about 145, 160 term series pools, we just came out with one of those. We have a three-month term series pool, that's a 185, I believe, up to the, I think the 11-month option was 2.1, somewhere in that range.
Yeah, you've got 11-month at 2.14, 4-month at 1.88, and 6-month at 2.
Got it, yeah. So that's what we're seeing with rates, but again, a lot of different options. We would look at all of it as we would consider kind of where the cities are with these cash flows and kind of what the needs are and what your liquidity needs are. The last page, I won't really go through, that's just kind of overview of PMA, who we are.
Back on that, excuse me, Corey, on that page, your saving deposit accounts.
Yes.
Is it similar to what we're doing at the bank?
Yep.
So same-day liquidity?
Yeah, so really, if you think of bank product, if you just took a CD out of the bank and then realized the next day, oh, we need that money, you have to go to the bank and break the CD early. They're gonna hit you with interest penalties, that'd be the same thing here. So there's not, it's not a liquid product, you definitely wanna hold it to maturity, but it's giving us the best rates, so it's kind of that weighing of what's most important, more liquidity or higher yield, so we kind of have that discussion back and forth. And we would certainly look at all of it, you know, we wouldn't wanna put everything in one basket, as they say, because if you put it all there and you need it early, you're gonna be penalized versus if you diversify a bit, you maybe have an option to pull this one and not face much of a penalty and still capture some of that additional yield from the other products, so we kind of look at all of that.
You're saying we just can't put money somewhere and be certain of the future all the time?
I guess not. If you can figure out a way to figure out. The last page again, just more about us, who we are, where we're located. PMA, all we do is public work, so we don't do any private sector work. We administer, like I mentioned, 4M, we work with some L-GIPS, as they call them, local government investment pools for schools in the state. I think we actually did, we were talking about Purim, I think we did that school bond, so when they bonded for that, we did the investment behind the scenes on those proceeds. So we do a lot of work on the school side too, but it's just public work, so that's kind of our specialty. So with that, I'll answer any other questions that there might be, or any thoughts on the information.
Well, Corey, you know, you've obviously spent some time with Corey.
Yeah.
Just Corey. Comments or anything that you two have talked about that you might have?
No. One of the questions I wanted to ask or bring up is, there's no cost to join.
Correct.
And you can join, but you don't have to invest or do anything at this point in time.
Correct, yes.
And how long does that, does that last forever, or do you have to re, do you have to rejoin or anything after so many years if you don't do anything with the products?
You don't. Basically, how it works, when we took over administration back in 2007, that's kind of a cutoff a lot of times, so if for some reason, the league were to say that, "PMA, you're not doing your job, we're gonna fire you and hire a new administrator." A lot of cities that were in the fund, who maybe weren't using it very actively, when PMA took over, they decided not to renew it, they were kind of given the choice, do you wanna renew your account with PMA as a new administrator, so some did not. But we have some from '07 that have been very active, some that have been less than active and have very little in it, and they haven't added to it, but their account is still open. Yep. And there's no minimums or whatever to be in the fund.
Okay. Yeah, because that's the only thing I would think of, is if you guys are still questionable, but it's still best to just join into it, if there's no obligation to do anything with it at this point in time, you know, we can still talk about options and stuff.
Yeah.
And we talked about, you know, if we had that option, it would give us, when CDs mature.
The flexibility.
Gives us the flexibility to proceed without waiting another month.
Yeah.
Or no fees, are there transaction fees?
No, so any rates that we quote are net of all fees. So the rates I was talking about, the, all the different rates we just discussed, those are net after all, all fees have been accounted for.
So that's where you guys are getting your money.
So yeah, when we, when the monies get pooled, they get invested at what they call a gross rate, and then through our agreement with the league, the league says, here's what the fees are, they set all those per the agreement, and then what's left is the net rate that you see when you invest, whether that's in the pooled products or in any of the fixed rate products. So there are no invoices that you get from us, it's all net, net of fees. I'll point out too, I, you know, we work obviously with cities throughout the state and local banks, we don't intend to come in and take all the money from the local bank, that's not the league's intent here, a lot of what they created was to provide a money market. We link up to the local bank, and so you can move the money electronically, there's online access to do that. The banking function should stay with the local bank, I mean, that's their role, that serves a critical role obviously for you when you're making payroll in AP. But 4M, they set it up to kind of be that cash and investment, kind of that secondary liquidity source, and so it's there, move it over there until you need it, let's get it back to the bank so you can fund the operation, so that's kind of the way it's structured. I mentioned US Bank is a banking custodian, there is a banking component to the fund. If you have a US Bank account, it can link in and kind of do a daily automatic sweep, but it doesn't mean you have to have a US Bank account. We can do a external link electronically and move the money that way.
And I have spoken to Pine River State Bank, and they're very familiar with the product.
We, we become a member, they're not gonna disown us?
No.
It's always good.
We've heard from some banks that, or some cities that say their bank doesn't want their money, which, I'm not a banker, so I'm not even gonna address that, but we've had some, one city that had said at the end of the year, they got their tax on that and went to the bank, and the bank said, "We won't pay that deposit," so they had to, they took it, but they would not collateralize it. So sometimes that becomes an issue with banks, where they say, "We'll take your money, but we aren't gonna pay for that collateral to keep it," and so we run into that a few times. So that's what Forum can kind of serve a purpose as that secondary piece, so you can stay in compliance and keep your audit.
I should talk to Dave Unmacher and see if he can't give a presentation to a large group like that.
Yeah. He likes to talk.
I just, I'd like to just clarify again, so.
Yeah.
So if we put in a million dollars, and we choose one of three locations to put that million dollars within your offerings, there, we would not incur any charges, and if we transferred from one to the other, took it out early, anything, it's, there's just, there's no charges to us.
Yeah, the only charge would be like, say, taking it out early, if you had to break a CD or something, then you'd have those interest penalties from the bank, but otherwise, yeah, there are no charges.
Because I, they did, we're talking about expenses in some of this, and so I just wanna clarify on that, that that's.
Yep.
Other questions, Corey or Corey?
No, no, too, I think I send Corey the resolution, you have the resolution. So the process for establishing an account is simply that resolution that Corey has shared with you. Once that's approved, then there's account paperwork, and within a few days, the account's ready for funding, so it's fairly straightforward process.
Yeah, if the council decides to move forward, it is on the consent agenda to approve.
Any questions, counsel? All right, thank you very much, Corey.
All right, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thanks.
This was in the back, is that the discussion table?
That's on our consent agenda.
Okay, I understand.
It was I 1.6.
I was looking at the little stuff underneath it, so. I knew it did every year, I just. All right, Mr. Jeffrey Anderson. Any questions on the Anderson property?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Ryan.
I think the only question that came up, well, the question that came up, I know that came up at planning and zoning was fire access, and I think it was just a matter of, is that okay with Mr. Anderson, I don't know if that's.
Yeah, we, so I talked to Matt Corner, and Matt actually copied Jeff on his response. It sounds like the preference would be to maintain that there's a paved area existing by the pole barn, so if the fire truck could use that for backup area, we could establish a small easement to be maintained there, and then there would have to be nothing created up by the house, so. He felt, yeah, the width and everything of the driveway and the clearance was all fine, so. So he was, yeah, just stating that if that, because that's already there, it would make a lot of sense to use that. I believe the only other thing brought up at the P&amp;Z was the delineation, but we had to wait until the growing season started to finalize that.
And he was on yesterday.
Oh, was he?
So that should be done.
That should be going, okay.
He said he was basically waiting for the vegetation, for the get-alls, breathing, he was out walking around yesterday.
Good.
All right, any other questions, Anderson?
So I think maybe what you should do is just amend the findings to include whatever option, option B, I guess it is, to maintain that as open area or shared use, backup, however you wanna phrase it. If you'd like me to mix, to amend the findings and get you another copy for Tuesday, we could do that.
At the counsel's preference. Don't hear any objections.
Okay.
Delineation's obviously being taken care of, isn't it?
Yes, and that's already listed as a condition.
Yep. All right, all code enforcement. You were out to the Anderson property late April, 24th?
Correct.
You'll be checking back shortly?
Checking back, driving by today, I didn't see much progress, but.
I saw somebody out there last night.
Did you?
Poking around, but I was gonna stop and ask what the progress was, but I figured I'd stay out of it, so.
Okay, yeah, I'll check back. Hopefully, I mean, he seemed like, I don't know what company he was with or anything, or if he was just, he said he was hired though, to help. One thing that's not on here as a general update is, we got a house up on North Lake Road that, there was a police call from, Conexus had called the sheriff regarding animals abandoned in the home, and they did get ahold of the owner who lives in Ramsey, and took two out of the three dogs, they allowed the woman to keep the smallest dog, but the house is uninhabitable, and Andy labeled it as such, posted it as such. So I just sent a letter saying that they need to have, Andy requested structural. So I just sent a letter saying that they need to have, Andy requested structural engineer to check it out. It's filthy, uninhabitable for many reasons, but he doesn't feel that the floors are, you know, structurally sound from the dog urine and feces. So it was also referred to the Humane Society. This was the same person that had a previous animal violation about nine years ago. So I haven't heard anything from the Humane Society, but I know she had to pay fines previously for the violations. So I'll keep you posted on that one.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rick.
Can we make sure that we get the address of that location sent to fire and police, so we don't run into any issues?
Sure.
Somebody, do I need to do any more, or?
Nope.
Nope, you're good. Sorry.
Good.
All right. Thank you, everyone.
We just thought you were engrossed in.
Yeah, you didn't want to hang out.
No, you're good to go. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Ryan.
On, on this topic, and Paul brings a, a point up. Is there a process that is used or required by Anoka County Dispatch to put flags on addresses? You know, in my time with Minneapolis, 911, we would have flags and it would come up to say A, B, C, D, whatever, with that property. I don't know if they're, Paul, Councilmember Rick, do you know if there's a true process, or?
Yeah, I would, I wouldn't know that. I'd have to ask Chief Corner. He knows of that, but I guess I, I don't know myself.
I think we should ask.
Yeah, add that to the fire board, would you?
Yeah. We could ask internal staff to find out what that process is, make our planning company and our internal staff maintenance that are out looking at things, and then our building inspector aware of what that process is so that they can complete that. And so that the public safety officials that are responding are aware of it.
From the sounds of it, you know, Andy was saying that the floors are so spongy, bad enough running into a fire. You know, if the floors are going to get wet before the fire gets to them, that's really bad. He'll check with Chief Corner and then ask him to add it to the fire board for this month. Both of our cities? Thank you. Good point on both your parts. Appreciate that. Guyer property. He did apparently get rid of his animals, except for the horses. The question you had, is he doing anything on his property? He's only taking them off. Part of your question, Liz?
So, yeah, the, the direction before was that two council members were going to go out and look. I don't know if that's been done. And then if you, yeah, I mean, with the business he's running, I guess, someone would need to clarify exactly what he's doing first, and then if there's any direction to work with him on an IUP, we could get that moving.
Well, we have not been back out there, so that one. Obviously, it needs to be set up. My understanding was they did give it all the animals except for the pony, but we can go confirm that. Anything else?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rick.
Yeah, obviously, the other question, the question at hand is if he's operating a business out of there, you know, is there a CUP or IUP that he needs to have, just like everybody else?
Yeah, I think that's the question. Is he's running a business from the property, which would require an interim use permit?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Benton.
Should we, being this has gone on quite a while, should we just have staff go out and do a site, make an appointment to a site inspection? And be done with it?
I think the reason that we chose the council members was the sensitivity to that, so. I think we'd like to give it this, would be our best chance at success here, so. Anything else, Liz?
That is it for code enforcement. Under planning, I have a couple other items. Neither will take very long. One would be that resolution extending the comp plan update another 12 months through December of 2019. And I highlighted in yellow on the resolution, they gave a, Met Council provided this resolution. So the only thing you had to fill in was, of course, the name of your city and then this reason why we were requesting the extension. So I just put land use planning issues, recent annexation request, and without a draft yet, we could not meet the six-month required review period. And in talking with the Met Council, they're totally fine with that and understanding the situation. So apologize for that late notice, but I just found out today that it was due the end of the month. So I obviously had to squeak it in here.
Any, do you have any problem putting that on the consent agenda? Put on the consent? And the other one, Liz?
The other one is just to give you a brief update on a conference call I had with our district rep, Eric Wocheck, and Lisa Barajas from Met Council, who's, of course, the manager of that division. Talked a little bit about the diversified rural and what the options were, if we didn't want to comply. And what I, what was indicated was that they're pushing for either the existing one per 10 density, which is large lot, or they would actually support much higher density. There's not a maximum density there. They would, if, if it's not one per 10, they would allow us to go down to one or one and a half acre lots that are served by shared systems, similar to Lake Elmo and/or Credit River. Now, Credit River has been functioning that way for a really long time. And they were explaining that their main goal is the preservation of natural resources. So if you're, if you're managing your environment and your systems properly, you may never need to extend services. Although, they did say that in Ramsey's comp plan, this, with this cycle, they are still considering in Ramsey's northeast corner, services extended possibly in the next 10 years. But still doesn't, you know, mean it's coming here. They were open to the idea of providing some smaller lots or higher density, whichever way you want to look at it, over on the southeast side of our city, along 181st in that area, Budding Elk River, and they agreed that that made a lot of sense as well.
Southwest.
So, oh, sorry, southwest, yes. So basically, they're either looking for the very large or a smaller lot that would never be re-subdivided. What they don't like is the one, the five acre or the two and a half acre size, which basically makes it impossible to re-subdivide based on, you know, people's placement of accessory buildings, the house itself, septic systems, that kind of thing. So whether you develop some sort of a cluster, if you want to call it that, residential open space type zoning, you know, that, I mean, all that is debatable, the zoning part of it. And, you know, they'd be very open to even transfer of development rights. You know, let's say if somebody's got three 40s and you take eight, we allow right now eight per 40. You allow 24 lots that are maybe one acre in size or an acre and a half in size and cluster those together in a neighborhood with a shared system similar to Morton Farm. So anyway, it's just something to think about before the meeting on the ninth. And I think they'd like to talk more about that as a flexible development option. And interestingly enough, in talking a little bit about the annexation, Met Council is always asked to review and comment on annexations, and they would not support Oak Grove, the land going to Oak Grove. They would support the land staying with Nowden. They don't see it ever.
Would not, or they do not?
They.
Have they been asked?
They do not support, and they don't support city-to-city annexations.
Yeah, there was actually a motion in the state legislature this year to make that more restrictive, even in the townships. They think that the townships are pillaged too easily, and they, they really didn't like the, the city. But it didn't get action this year. It looks like it'll be on for next year.
Okay.
But, you know, understanding that in 40 years, only 790 acres have ever moved between cities. And this would be a good portion of that all in one fell swoop is.
Right. But it's good to know, anyway.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Benton.
How did Oak Grove get their whole city to be doing half acres?
Well, it's like our rural residential, which is one per five. They just chose one per two and a half. So it's still rural residential. I mean, they used to be all rural residential like we were. So that's just how, you know, it was.
Well, Met Council was pushing us to be four per 40. They like our one. Or recently, they wanted our whole, when we were a township, they wanted Berms Township to be 10-acre lots. Township wide.
Yeah.
And here we have them next to us over here, and they're getting by two and a half acre lots. So it's just something doesn't seem right here.
Well, actually, in their comp plan, Met Council does state they want four per 40. It's stated in there, but within the diversified rural, you can technically go down to one, right?
Two and a half, I think.
No, they, they chose two and a half. You can go smaller in the diversified rural. And they chose two and a half because you can still have a building and still have some of the things people move out here for, but they can have twice the development. But it states right there, because you look at their comp plan, the draft has already gone out. And it says, you know, you know, one per 10. And then later it says, but they choose two and a half. So it seems a conflict, other than they're saying what we want and Met Council's saying, here's what we want. But two and a half is still within the diversified rural classification.
So why can't we do the same?
I don't think, that doesn't make sense to me. I mean, I don't think, for diversified rural, they're always asking for four per 40. They want, I mean, I think the intent was, for whatever reason, you know, originally, at a rural residential density, two and a half or five acres is acceptable. You know, even though their preference is always larger lots, but when it got right down to being forced into the diversified rural, you know, that's when they really wanted the preservation of A. But there's, you know, their whole premise is, as long as you're managing, you have good management of septic systems and, you know, natural resource type areas that, I don't know, it's.
So what's preventing us from dropping the diversified rural altogether?
Well, we could choose not to comply and, right, you know. What's stopping it is that they're, they have it in their overall plan that, you know, that is to remain. So, you know, we could still proceed through, you know, the way we've talked through the legislature. But I don't know. It's, uh, not easy, but technically, anything over an acre lot is considered rural residential. That's always what I've known for 30 years as in planning. So even the suburbs that have what they call, you know, large lot areas are an acre. They call those rural residential somewhere. So it's just such a big variety. But they look at a city like Oak Grove with two and a half acre lots as just kind of being, it's too late. I mean, it's, it's not worth extending services because you can't re-subdivide.
Well, and I guess that's my understanding, was what they're forcing us to do is hold those bigger lots so that when and if these amenities ever come, then you can subdivide those sections into smaller lots. So in a sense, based, I guess, my train of thought here, they're dictating to you, you can stay with what we tell you on the four per 40 now, or you can just go down to the one, one and a halves that we want to begin with if you save this land and amenities do come in. So it's, they're saying here, stay with what we, we're telling you we really want, but if you don't, you can go to what we would want if you have the services. You know, there's no in-between there. And I, again, you know, they, we all know in 10 years or probably well in excess, we're not going to see those amenities. You know, so I don't, I don't see.
That's the confusion. So Oak Grove's comprehensive plan, community designation 4.3. Met Council has established following policies for the community of Oak Grove to follow regarding land use planning based on determination. Discourage future developments of rural residential patterns, unsued lots of 2.5 acres or less. And where opportunities exist, plan for rural development densities that are not greater than four units per 10 acres. Couple paragraphs down, discourage future developments of rural residential patterns, unsued lots of 2.5 acres or less. Encourage rural development at densities not greater than one per acre, one unit per 10 acres. Work with communities to plan development patterns will protect natural resources, maintaining existing contiguous lots at 10 acres or more in size. 4.7. Maintain policies, rural residential policies in the Oak Grove plan. Maintain a maximum rural residential density of four units per 10 acres. Protect areas containing significant environmental natural features. Maintain overall rural residential density and minimal impact of site's natural features. Overall density shall not exceed four units per 10 acres. Cluster development shall provide a plan for ongoing maintenance and conservation areas. Communal utility systems are utilized and they shall be privately owned and professionally managed. So it's all over their comp plan until you get to the very back and they say density within the cluster subdivision shall not exceed four units per 10 acres. Minimum lot size shall be 1.5 acres in area. So this is all over their comp plan. Now, did they just let Met Council in the standard subdivision section in 413, to maintain and enhance rural character of Oak Grove, the city will allow a standard rural subdivision meeting the following criteria. Minimum lot size of 2.5 acres, density shall not exceed four units per 10 acres. So they can go down to 2.5, but you still have to have the four units per 10 in that, that subdivision.
Yeah, but four units per 10 is two and a half.
It's 2.5, right. So everything else is said one, one per 10 until you get to this standard subdivision. So it, it seems a bit conflicted.
Yeah.
And so it's like, it almost looks like the Met Council wrote most of it for them and then they stuck in the standard subdivision criteria. But everything up until that point has been, been one per ten. And according to the statute that they had changed, they don't, Met Council was booted out from Musa area down to Long Handover. And the rest of it, they're allowing to go with the two point five, which is what Mr. Raisler's planning on at that point.
Mm-hmm.
Or less, depending on how he approaches the council in the future. So, you know, our, our agreement as the council is, we don't want them out here at all.
Right.
If there's something that makes sense to us.
Yeah.
And it just happens to agree with something they've said would be acceptable to them, that's a different matter.
Yeah.
But we don't want to get into a locked agreement with them on anything. It might make sense for some people that want to live out here and want some smaller lots to do something, we approach the community with it. It certainly wouldn't be called cluster housing. But, but if there's something with a shared municipal that allowed people to stay out here on a manageable property and not change the nature of our community, you know, I think it's worth discussing at our workshops, out in the public so everybody knows what's going on. But, but if it's forced on by the Met Council, I think, unless anybody's changed their mind, the council has said we don't want it. So do you anticipate on, on the ninth, that's going to be drama of any sort?
I don't know if drama's the right word, but no, I mean, I think it's, I think we should ask for clarification and just tell them what you want.
So now as far as the, you had talked about Ramsey, that within ten years, they might be looking at, at supporting something in the northeast and our southwest?
I haven't seen a copy of their draft plan yet, but Met Council just indicated that their plan is going to address it and that it is moving that direction from where.
Forty-seven?
Didn't specify, but I'm guessing that.
Is it possible, just so that we're prepared for what the Met Council is going to recommend or propose or discuss, that we can get that, anything in writing on that?
From Ramsey?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll try.
And, and what you had talked about in the southwest with the communal septic. And obviously, you're going to get pressure, depending on what, what the logic determines on our eastern border, logic might say that that southwest corner is going to be the next point of contention.
Could be the northeast.
Could be.
City sewer in St. Francis and there's a developer that owns a lot of land up there.
And more coming for sale. Track them towards Oak Grove because their council has already said, we'll support anybody who wants to change municipalities for their benefit. So if there's a developer that wants to take a piece of Northwest Oak Grove, they've already said they'll not only not resist it, they'll help, so.
Well, they resisted and, they had summed up St. Francis, almost from St. Francis, and I don't know if they come up with an agreement, well, they must have come up with an agreement because they went down to one acre lots and the city, St. Francis provides water service to them.
Yeah.
It's like a hundred lots.
And even though this council wasn't, wasn't in place of that, they still said they're smarting from it. There's still bad relationship over that. We brought that up on that Monday, but you already know your experience in St. Francis and they were able to back out of it, but it was tense. But they, to a person, I don't know if Mr. Wiley said it, but the others said, if somebody wants to do this in Andover or St. Francis or anybody else wants to move over from Now Then, if Oak Grove wants to move down to Now Then, we believe in property rights and, and we will support whatever people want. And we said, you know, even if that means somebody from St. Francis wants to, to take the northwest corner of Oak Grove, because they can provide twenty-four-hour policing, the fire department is much closer and they have sewer and water.
Yeah.
And certainly, St. Francis is looking to expand homes that are paying for that sewer and water. So higher density development in Oak Grove, they said, no, it had to be two and a half. And one of the council members said, no, if it moves to St. Francis, it's whatever St. Francis says, we don't control it anymore. But they did say, if anybody wanted to do it, they would support it. And that is on public record, so. You know, anybody up there looking to expand, point them a little east. Because they said they, they will welcome property owners doing what they want to do with their property.
So Met Council's going to be at this Friday meeting?
Yes. Yeah, we gotta just get it figured out and move on with the land use plan that. You can be happy with.
But yeah, if you could give us anything that would help us prepare to the types of things they're going to propose, discuss.
Right.
Challenge us on, so we can come in prepared rather than trying to do it off the cuff here, so. But we, we want to be as polite as we can about it, but right now, we would like the residents of Now Then to be able to make that choice and not have it mandated. And I, I don't know, seeing the draft of Oak Grove, you know, this is just four of their five and their two appendices, but it seems an awful lot of one in ten that's, nobody over there is planning on one in ten.
Yep.
Has anybody spoken to or heard from Speaker of the House?
Well, I sent that email, what, about a week ago or was it longer? His, not his assistant, but he's got like another, two assistants, one of them, I can't think of the name right now. There's Isaac Schultz and then another guy. And he was working with me and asking specifics about what we wanted and, so, yeah, his words to me were that they're working on a draft, some draft language for us to look at.
Be possible to try and touch base with them again, tell them we're meeting with our community and Met Council's going to be there.
Okay.
On Wednesday. See, see how far along the draft is. Councilmember Rainville.
Mr. Mayor, it would be interesting too, and I've not read any of his bill, but Congressman Emmer is trying to get away with the Met Council. So it'd be interesting.
Actually, Jason Lewis.
But that's what I meant.
He got it passed through the.
Is Congressman.
To the House of Representatives, now it's got to, it's got to get through the Senate.
Yeah, what that would, and I, my, my ear and saying, I was thinking Emmer is ours and it's Congressman Lewis, what effect that would have.
So on all, everywhere.
Well, I don't know.
He's trying to, to make it so they don't control the transportation funding and dispersment and that they can't function without elected officials, local elected officials. It's, it's the same proposal that's been going through the counties here, that they want elected officials as part of that body, not just an extension of the executive office in the state.
Right.
The, the reason it went through the House of Representatives at the federal level is because they made that determination and this is the only planning body in the country that operates this way. It's the only one appointed by the governor. Everybody else has elected officials so that they can coordinate how things affect their area without having to be a central core extension of the executive branch. And so that argument passed the House. Our two senators have said they'll vote against it in the Senate, but we don't know where it'll fall in the Senate. They're still, they're asking people to voice their opinion, both, you know, whichever way you feel about it, to your senators and they're, they're appealing to Mitch McConnell not to bring it up. But it, it has passed the House.
Okay.
And that would, would change the structure so that they wouldn't have total control of the transportation funds and they would have to include elected officials from their local communities.
Okay, I'll gather up what I can for your reading pleasure.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
Would it, Planner Stockman think, would it be to our benefit at all to have somebody from Representative Dowd's office also in attendance?
I'll ask them if they have any interest in attending.
I'm guessing they're a little hectic around the.
I'm sure it isn't, it's getting to the end of the session.
Now that you have contact from somebody other than Isaac, sounds like he may be secondary to Isaac, so.
Yeah.
If they can afford one to come out here, be a nice little journey to the country. And we get a break from St. Paul for a couple hours.
All right, I'll check it out.
All right. Thank you, Liz. Roden Bridge.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bryan.
At the last Roden, Roden Bridge meeting, there was some residents that were from the Rogers Lake area expressing their concern about their neighborhood, so out of that, out of that discussion, we came two RCAs to bring the council's attention. The first one was to, to bring up at least the option of, as part of just, when we're discussing, if we're discussing bonds for the road projects for this year, to, you know, at least include in the discussion the possibility of including the funding for the Rogers Lake area. We've expressed that, that would be a two-year project, but it would make the most sense to do, to do that in, as one big project for one year, so which would require bonding for the, for the funds, at least on a temporary basis until they could be repaid by money put in from the, from the, from the annual road improvement fund. So at least to include that as the possibility to, and then based on that, the Roden Bridge Committee potentially, when we're updating the five-year plan, could move, look at, as we're reevaluating for next month, look at moving up the Rogers Lake project as needed.
Councilmember Rainville.
Councilmember Bryan, so, and I listened to the, the meeting, my ears were all plugged up from my cold, so, is this the entire portion of Now Then in that area or is it just bad spots? I was, it was never real clear.
The evaluation, the last road evaluation from Shane was to, that, the majority of that area was going to involve a full reclamation.
Okay.
Estimated at about eight hundred thousand dollars.
Okay. And then a question associated with your second RCA, and I know you haven't talked about it yet, but would this, if we go forward with the, the replacement on Rogers Lake area, would that not also contain these, redoing the pit areas of pits?
It wasn't specifically outlaid in the, in the road study that the eight hundred thousand would include, would include repairing the, the sub base. Out there, there, after, you know, talking with Joe about it, there's at least three pits that haven't been dug up yet, that there may be more. And at least two of those are causing dips in, in the roadway. And that's what, what the other two would be for, the other, the other RCA was for.
The, the understanding was that the eight hundred thousand did not include the correction of the, the sub base. Joe is taking care of three known pits that he was given his problems in the past. The pits, correct me if I'm wrong, Joe, are where the development went in, they buried large tree trunks in the road.
Trees and stumps, yeah.
So, the last one you went down, or one of them, you had to go down twenty feet.
Twenty feet, not a foot, we've all.
So we, we don't have any idea what, the three pits that are known now, you know, at one point, there was maybe suggested there were seven, we know of six anyway, we don't know if there's others at this point. But there was some discussion, thus the second RCA, as if there was money in the budget this year to do some of the restoration of the base before we would go through and, and do the whole neighborhood. There was a talk of doing it in two chunks because that's what we had generally planned in our budget was to, to do three to four hundred thousand dollars a year. But in discussion at the Roden Bridge, you know, the idea that breaking up a, basically a closed neighborhood like that into two construction seasons, you might get a better rate on the construction if you did it all at once and the hassle's done with it. There hasn't been a lot done to those roads in the past thirty years, so. So it was one of the suggestions was bonding for it. If we get a better rate on a, a more significant bond, when I was up at the mayor's conference, I talked to Chris Mickelson from Ayers. And right now, with the type of rate that you're getting, could potentially get through the four and M fund or something like it, if you're up at the two point two of better, he says, right now, the bonds are coming around three. It's possible that you could bond and not have multiple issuing costs. You get it all in one lump sum, you get a little better rate on the bond because it's a higher bond, you use the money that's been approved for this year, invest the rest or I feed upon project for next year. And you would, you would avoid the extra fees each time you bond. So it's something that we could discuss, make sure that everything was, was legal. And if it's, if the bond rates stay at close to three and the short-term funds are two and a quarter or so, does that counter the effect of having to pay issuance fees twice or three times? So it's, it's worth a discussion that way. It's something we could, could bond for this year with the idea that it's going to be spent next year as soon as the season opens up or just proceed as we are year by year.
Mr. Mayor.
The discussion at the Roden Bridge was, it does make sense if you're going to do a closed area like that, do it all in one year rather than multiple years. Councilmember Batfield.
From my understanding, when Shane spoke in that area, that that's considered a total reconstruct and then corrections were figured in there. He, him and Joe had talked about them, holes where the stumps are and they need to be dug out, so I think he was aware of them and I think that, I'm pretty sure that's in the eight hundred thousand dollars.
Okay.
Number one. And number two is, when the bonding guy was out there, we talked about bonding, like that he actually advised not to do that because you'd be bonding, you'd have to bond for what the citizens are going to pay back too, because that's part of it. And we, that's how you'd have plans and specs to go for bids, you don't know exactly what that number's going to be. And you have to have a way to pay that back. There's a lot of unknowns, it's pretty hard to do it before you have plans and specs to go for bids. So, because I asked that specific question about bond for like a three-year, three years of projects to get a better price. If I remember right, Chris actually advised against that.
Mr. Mayor.
Well, that's, that's why I asked him to talk it over Bruce and Cory and come prepared because last weekend, he thought that was a pretty good idea. So same guy, different, different day. Councilmember Rick.
Do we know how many houses this affects?
I believe it was fifty-seven.
So, say if you even say sixty.
Remember?
I don't remember the exact number.
The guy that was doing all the talking said fifty, fifty houses, I think he said.
You're talking minimum of eight grand a household? And I guess the other question, you know, correct me, this wasn't the highest rated one on Shane's report, was it, or the lowest rated?
They were, that, that was quite up there and it was.
Well, I'm not, that's what I'm saying, it wasn't the lowest. And the other comment that Shane had made. And the other comment that Shane had made at one point, that he thought, you know, there's some that are almost to the point where they're too far gone, so in his professional opinion, you try to look at what, what can be saved now, and you get the biggest bang for your buck. So to me, you know, even if, say if we use an 800,000 dollar figure, for the city to throw 400 grand at a project, which, again, based on Shane's report, isn't the worst of the worst, but isn't the biggest bang for the buck either, in my opinion.
Rogers Lake is the only one that was, was marked to be a full reclamation, and that nothing could be salvaged from it. And so.
But again, based on Shane's report, it's not the worst rated one on that report, if I recall right.
Well, it's the only one that's total reclaim.
I could be wrong, I, I gotta look, I was trying to find it this afternoon, but I had some stuff that, I didn't get to it, but, but again, I specifically recall Shane, you know, pointing out the fact that, you know, there's certain projects where, yeah, it's, it's tough to pick, and because we are working with such a limited amount of funds at this time, his professional opinion was try to get the biggest bang for your buck. And, you know, we don't know if, you know, if there's 50 houses in there, you start throwing an 8 to 10,000 dollar assessment on, at people, plus a 400.
Well, they'd like the city to take it all.
Well, I'll tell you what, I wouldn't fight that tooth and nail, because I've been assessed where I'm at right now, and look at the condition of my road. So.
Well, I, I don't think anybody there said that the city was thinking.
But again, half a million dollars investment on the city's part is huge, we could take that half a million and put it into a lot of other roads, and there'd be a lot of people happy with too. I know we, you know, we've had a shortfall in our road improvement fund for years, and we've slowly trying to work our way out of this big, huge hole. My opinion is you take that huge 400, 500,000 dollar figure and throw it at one project, you know, we're taking everything we got, and we're starting over, and, and, you know, again, is that our biggest bang for the buck?
It may not be, but we have to do something down there.
And again, just like my road, I've, I've been assessed for my road, I already was. I'm, I'm not opposed to patching it like we have.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Bettinger.
The road doesn't need patched at this point, there's no, the plows haven't gone through, it's not broken up, it's, there's, there's, we have areas that I think, that, from this winter, that are going to need some patching and stuff, so we have some projects that are on plan, for probably going to, going to be coming up here yet, but I would not be willing to vote for, at this point, we'd have to sell bonds over 800,000 plus, we'd have to take on our debt as a city, and promise to pay them bonds back until we have a project and it's done, and then we can start assessing back, a share of it, whatever that is, if it's 50% or wherever it is. That's a lot of, a lot of debt to take out at this point, you pay an interest on.
That's why it was at least suggested, so that we could, as, as the, as the committee, use that in their determination where to, to fit it in. And if we want to continue as a council to put it in as a two-year plan, then we can do that. For the, for the dips in the pits, this was another discussion that I had with Joe, and it was, coming up with a way to, to, to fund it was, 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 we both agreed was a challenge. We know that we probably, we may or may not get all the work done, but this was at least a potential to get something started, to look at the worst one. There was 36,000 that we put into the road improvement fund earlier this year, we could look at using that as a starting point and see how far we get. The difficulty is, you can't necessarily, until you actually open it up and look underneath, you don't actually know what's under there, so you don't know exactly what it's going to take to complete the job.
So to Councilman Bettinger's point, that there's a bunch of other roads that may need that money, who knows that, and what are we going to do about that? We've got Valerie Glissmeyer here, who says 213th is undrivable.
I was up there last night, that's, I'm, I'm definitely, you can drive through it, it's definitely a patch that, a place where you could put in a patch to even out the surface. And yeah, there's, there's other work that's potential, that was brought up at Roden Bridge on Garnet.
Which Garnet, south or north?
Um, I don't know, the one with, where the, the alligator cracking was going on, there was Ebony and Garnet, south.
That was a road that Roden Bridge had to follow on a few water crashes issue. That's a road that's been alligated for 25 years or better, but it's held up to this point as an alligator road, I don't know how, must have a good gravel basin stuff underneath it, that has it rutted.
Water crashes?
Yeah, water crashes.
Yeah, the plow went through it this, this winter.
Right, that's what I'm saying, but it, it's been alligated like that for 25 years plus. Because we, we've had hearings on getting that repaired, and residents didn't want to pay for it, so. That was probably back when we did, oh, I don't know, it had been before that, when we did 185th, 187th, we had, we had a public.
It was done before that. It was done, I don't know.
We should have concluded 213th in Xenon Street with the, that project we had going up there. Originally, the developer paved them two pieces of road along with that development. We probably should have had them added into that Pinnacle Lake Estates project.
Yeah, it looks like it's, I'm trying to think, there was, might have already been a patch done on it at least once. So I know Ebony and Garnet was slated for, for next year, but that was with the understanding that some of the, the, the sub base work would be, the sub base would be intact to put an overlay on it.
Well, it'll make it 213th and the portion of Xenon in there. So with your second RCA, do you need to discuss with Joe where else that money might be needed? And have what's remaining, work the pit at a time?
Basically, it would come down to, yes, basically, get started on one and see how far it takes.
Yeah, but I'm saying that if you take over 213th and, and Alacra and some of these others, that we need to use the funds that are designated for that type of repair there first, and do what we can then to, with what's remaining in Rogers Lake.
You could certainly take that approach and see what, if, if it's a matter of how much funds do we want to start with, and, and see how far we get with what's the worst.
So we need an estimate.
I think that's go back to road bridge and come up with the list of the areas that need to be patched, and then give estimates. Maybe we don't have enough money.
I can pretty much guarantee that.
I would bet on it.
The, included in the packet were, were quotes for the dust control and the crack sealing, based on, I think there's some, just, just some clarification that needs to be made, based on motions that were passed last month about, and as well as motion that was passed in February. In February, we approved going ahead with the dust control bid and the, and the crack sealing to, to get mailed quotes and to open and to go ahead and proceed, but I think based on last month, there was some question about if that was still the council's intention, or some other plans were to be made, so there's some clarification with the expenditure process. So I, so the first question that I was wondering for the, wondering is, was the, is the intention from the council still that Joe was able to go through the bids and, and has approval to basically just let the council know which, which vendors that he's picking, and go ahead and has permission to go ahead with those projects? Or is it something that the council actually wants to pick, pick a vendor and move forward with?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bettinger.
I'm the one that made the motion, and it was for him to get the quotes and to proceed with the projects.
Mm-hmm.
And it's about to stay within budget, so I don't think there's any other council action at this point, other than this would be for informational purposes only.
Okay, I think there was some clarification based on the funding process and, and required an approval that Joe wasn't, that it was, if it was still clarified, and I think we're in agreement that yes, Joe can go ahead with that, so.
I think that's you were talking about, because the attorney was here, and you said you needed something documented.
Mm-hmm. I don't believe that fell in this, did it? It fell into more of a, you know, the day-to-day operating, or not day-to-day, but if something happened, would Joe, a truck broke down, and Joe went out and spent 1,000 bucks that we didn't specifically, you know, have a set budget for?
Yeah, I think that's what, we really didn't get clarified, you know, what was he talking about? I think that's why Joe's been making sure he's spending money, he's covering himself with that. But I, I, I personally think that, that even within the budgeted items, it makes sense to have a resolution. Joe picks one of these, he, you know, I don't know which one you've worked with before, Zara's of Tar or AS, ACS. So he picks one because it's lower here, and he's worked with them and likes them. I still would like to see it come through as a resolution, so residents know, we've all signed off, Joe's made a decision, we put it through as a resolution, so that any, anytime there's an expenditure, there's a resolution to support it. Would make sense to me. I know that's what a lot of other cities do, if you're spending money, put it in form of a resolution, and, and I'm not sure if that's exactly what Bob was talking about, but that's covered, because he picked somebody, it's in a resolution, I'm going with so-and-so, and we're, we're proceeding. It's in a resolution, and then we've signed off on it. And he's covered, because the council signed off on the resolution.
And I don't think that's how the motion was made, number one, and I don't think that's how, obviously, because that's your think, way of thinking, and mine's different, we need to get Bob's clarification, but Randy's motion was not that way. And I voted, you know, in agreement with that, where Joe was to go out bids, and we could not do sealed bids, Bob specifically made a point of that. And that, once Joe selected, you know, a vendor to go with, that he would, you know, go ahead with the work as long as it stayed within the set budgeted amount that we had already budgeted. That was that, but then we did also talk about the other issue with if emergencies or things like that came up, that's where we were talking more along lines of where would staff be covered if they had to do something and, you know, or needed something fixed, or needed fuel, or whatever, you know? What limit can we, or do we have on them as far as making those kind of purchases?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Rainey.
I, I, my memory tells me, and that doesn't always mean correct, but my memory tells me that I asked Bob if by council passing a budget for a department, that that then allows the department head of that department to spend those funds without coming back to council. My memory tells me, he said no.
That's incorrect, because that's how Ramsey does it, everybody does it that way. You know, I talked to Chief Kona about our fire department budget.
I'm just trying to finish my sentence. All right, thank you. That's my memory. And that led us into this, we need to have a resolution that explains, or, or policy that, that provides the department heads the ability to spend money. And again, I may be wrong, but that's, that's what I remember. In regards to this, yeah, the motion for these quotes was that to approve the plan, approve Glaze to get quotes, and the quotes be kept on file at city offices, Glaze can move forward with the graveling and dust control within the budgeted amount. And then that the amended the motion to put a deadline in the, in the time of when the quotes needed to be brought to staff, to, to city offices, and opened by staff, and that was passed unanimously. But again, my memory tells me that I asked about whether or not approving a budget means they have free rein. Now, other cities may do that, because they may have something in policy that says staff has the ability to do this. I don't know that. So I would think that would be something we'd want to get clarified, and then that would help us move forward on a policy as to how we're going to handle expenses, because that's been sitting there for a little bit.
But Mr. Mayor, by us making the motion to approve Joe to get the bids, to go ahead with the project, that is giving the approval.
Correct.
We don't need a separate resolution to come back to us and say, okay, Joe picked so-and-so, and go with it.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just, you know, I heard recently that if you were going to look at a well-run city, that the, the council in Oak Grove would be pictured in the description in the dictionary, so.
Hey, Mr. Mayor, well, if you want to go that far, you look at how Oak Grove runs their meeting, we don't run our meeting anything like Oak Grove. You know, they have their discussion before their vote and their second, which to me makes a heck of a lot more sense than the way we do it. So if you want to say Oak Grove is this god of gods, and how they run their meeting, why aren't we doing ours like theirs?
I, I didn't say that they were the picture.
You just.
I'm saying, I heard somebody say that. No, but that, they, they were, there was some discussion, they were one in particular, I heard that expenditures always, it was actually Rick Chuba that said they always have any expenditures they put in a form of resolution to cover themselves. And I don't know what level that goes to, he didn't tell me, you know, what dollar amount that was, or, or if that was something like this, if something else that came up, so I really don't know, it's just, it seems to make sense to, to make sure that their expenditures are properly documented. In this case, if it's within the budget, and I think you had mentioned gravel and dust control, we're talking about, crack sealing and dust control. I, I did have a question on the dust control. The central Minnesota dust control, they're using 33% dust card plus magnesium chloride? What is, are you familiar with that, is Joe?
I don't know what those people, so I don't know where they came from. Somebody else called. I never heard of them.
So you don't know what this dust card plus is?
Oh, it's magnesium for the business. I talked to one company calling about it. I never contacted them. Somebody else contacted them?
On the dust control, you worked with all of these people before?
I never even looked at any of them. I never even looked at any of it. At least I might pick one, I always get accused of picking a close pick or a friend. So I need to look at them, I don't counsel a good one, or you. I have a funny revelation I have up here with my daughter, two grade kids, neither one of them were in a black house with dust control.
Yeah. So you're, you're asking, in this case, just for us to pick one?
See, you go ahead and pick one, that way I'm not playing favorite children or anything. These past few years, I got, used to play favorite children or whatever.
Council have preference?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bryan.
From what I, from what I understand, the magnesium chloride works, but at least from doing some limited research on the internet, it's harder on concrete, not that that would affect dust control per se, but also that it doesn't necessarily last as long as the calcium chloride. So I'm certainly no expert in dust control, but I would, at least from my limited research, would say the magnesium is not a choice that we'd want to do. From a, uh, cost pers- pers- perspective, Joe said he's worked with Northern South before and at least right now, they have the lowest bid. As far as dust control goes.
So you're going to recommend then on Tuesday, that's what we go with?
I would say we can go ahead and ignore them south.
Anybody else have any opinions at this point? About crack seal.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
I have a question on crack seal, um, and I know that we budget it for it, but last year, we, um, budgeted and then at council member, um, Bettinger's suggestion, we looked, we asked Joe just to look at what's the, what are the worst areas that need to be crack sealed? And, um, my recollection tells me that he did go through and had some of the city crack sealed, and it was about $7,000, seven or eight thousand dollars that we spent on it, and, um, which then saved us, because I think our crack seal budget's about 38,000, if I'm remembering. But then we went and did a bunch of crack sealing at the end of the year. So I don't know if we want to look at, um, doing a portion of it again like we did last year, that, as council member Bettinger suggested, and not do the remainder at the end of the year, or, I don't know. Because, but that would allow us to do is, let's say we just take these and, I'm just going to take the top one, it's $37,000. If we were able to spend approximately 7,000, like I think we did last year to begin with, that would give us, um, $30,000 still left in the budget to do, um, for paved roads, so it might help us in Rogers Lake or some of the other locations that we need to do some work. But that would prevent us from doing work, doing crack seal later on.
There, there was some discussion last year, you know, we, we've gotten into a pattern over the decades, that one year you do the northern half, next year you do the southern half, and you alternate. And the question came up, do we really know that all of those roads need dust control? If, if we've got approximately 20 miles and dust control crack sealed? If we got approximately 20 miles, do they all need to be done? Are the providers doing what's necessary, or are they just doing every crack that's there? Discussions, we weren't, weren't really sure, other than if there was a bad crack, it was going to be sealed. And so the thought was to take the worst roads in the north and make sure they were crack sealed, and rather than doing everything north and south, start taking the worst roads throughout the city and identifying those and sealing up those, trying to get in a pattern of identifying the worst cracks and whether north or south, and just doing those, and not spending money on things that really didn't need to be done. And I think with that general instruction that Joe asked, he took the worst ones in the north and it cost about $7,000. The under, understanding was that there was some consideration that if there's money left over, it would go into Old Viking, or one of the projects we had there. When that turned out not to be true, we were able to go back and use the rest of the funds to make sure the north side got done. The question is, how do we want to approach it going forward? Do we want to just continue to do north-south, to identify the worst roads and get those cracks sealed, no matter where they are, and start reducing this budget to just the necessary ones? Pardon?
No, those are healthy.
So you would say there's no picking and choosing this year? Pretty much, the 20 miles that's designated, in your opinion, needs it. Life just says approximately 20 miles on, on the bid sheet here.
They can't always pick and choose, they're not, they're taking off Old Viking, they said they wouldn't, they wouldn't even touch Old Viking, it doesn't matter. They're not going to do Rogers Lake because it will buy a whole base down here.
So these, these bids don't include Rogers Lake area or Old Viking, but they do include the city parks and the fire station and recycling service, cycling center service room.
So, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bryan.
So reverse of the discussion from last year would be, are there, are there any areas on the north end that have, that warrant cracks that would potentially be, need to be filled this year so that the road lasts longer? I think that was basically the point that council member Bettinger made last year, was there might be some on the south that needed to be done. Correct me if I'm wrong.
Well, what I brought up last year was the county typically doesn't crack seal all the roads every other year. They normally do them once and, and they may come back to them again if they drive through and sees it needs it, but they don't schedule it for every other year to crack seal every road. So after using, if it's done right, you're using the proper material, it typically shouldn't be done every other year, in my opinion, but, um, if you go, and I've walked my road and just stopped this cracking, I don't know why, but where they put in the, uh, the crack sealer, it's, it's cracking right down the middle of the, the joint, so, so they need to router them out and reseal them. And I assume Joe has driven the road, so he should, he should know better than anybody, so.
Was yours done last year, Randy?
I don't know. Yes. I might catch them now, being older today.
Next year.
So council member Bettinger, you're saying your road was done last year and it could be redone again?
There's, some, some cracks are, are recracked, yeah.
Do we have a deficiency in what we're requesting, um, whether it be the, the process used or the materials used, that if we paid them to do that last year, it's only spring now and it's already deficient?
Right, but when they, when they come out and they go through the roads and redo them, they don't, they don't, uh, route off every crack and redo them, they just do the ones that are cracked last year. So this might be one that they, the ones that are cracked now may be ones that they didn't redo.
Oh, okay, I took it as.
Yeah, they don't do every single crack.
Huh?
They won't do every single one.
Okay, I, I guess I, I, I understood you to say that they fixed it last year and it's bad already, meaning they, they crack sealed something last year and already that crack seal is bad, but you're saying it's possibly a different one?
I, I don't know.
Okay.
I'm not up for math and every crack in a road.
Without dating every crack seal, you don't know what's done.
I, I just, and that, and it just leads me to, is our process sufficient in what we're asking to be done and, um, materials used and such?
I mean, it's, it, it's helping, that's, it works, it helps, so it keeps the moisture of the road dead, so that's what you want to do.
So what's the council want to do? Joe, have you worked with Zara's of Tar before?
10 years, I mean, probably done 15, 20 years.
ACS is?
Uh, I worked there for five years.
Is that related to Brad? What's that company?
He used to be diversified, A C S.
And you've been happy with ACSs? Who did last year, do you remember?
I would say that's who we go with then.
Center agenda?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bryan.
Uh, one question I had regarding 1.9 and regarding the, um, blitzfire attack nozzle, I just wasn't sure if the council wanted to use all those donated funds to do it or look at to see if there was maybe using one of those donations and then using some of the, uh, budgeted funds for the remainder. I know there's, um, like about, there's $2,500 in the line item for the computers and office equipment, which probably wouldn't probably be spent, knowing that we talked about how much we would need for computers, that if we similarly find it, we could, you know, take the, um, donation from the, um, let me just find it. Take the full donation of the 3313, um, and then from the Elker other youth hockey association and then pull out $692.20 from the, uh, the office equipment computer fund and existing budget and pay for the full $4,010.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
To council member, um, Brian, is that computer fund, is that from general fund or is that the fire department?
Just for the fire department.
Fire, fire department.
There's one computer down there.
Okay, I, I just want, I need to hear that side. I would be in favor of that.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Ricker.
My only question is, if, if the funds are there, you know, why not use them for, you know, I remember in, in years past where we talked about our gambling proceeds and where they went to, and council members specifically stated that they should go to this kind of thing. I don't know much about this, you know, I haven't talked to Chief Koner about it or anything, so, um, but.
Apparently they have one and two already.
Um, but, um, I'd hate to take money away from somewhere where, you know, we don't know what, what, you know, if we take money away from the computer fund, what happens if something happens to the computer? We've got to.
There's $2,500 in that fund. In that, in that, the, the, set aside for, for that, for computers and office equipment. And I know we talked before, even if we had a thousand dollars for a computer, that's more than adequate to replace a computer.
Mr. Mayor.
Bettinger.
I would think before we start taking money out of, uh, the fire department's budget and putting it on the south, we should talk to the fire chief first.
Mr. Mayor, um, just so you're aware, um, Pam was just in, today we were looking at his budget, and, um, we've already spent $10,000 in just employees, years ago. And we just spent another, what, $3,000 something dollars in, in, um, on the equipment for them to do the, um, I forget what they call it, the year of the annual review of the equipment, so there've been a lot of fire calls this year. And I hate to eat up, you know, we could be dipping into that, into other areas of their budget if we have a bad fire season.
Just an idea.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
Um, to council member Ricker, yeah, I, I did bring forward a, a proposal to, to designate, um, that each, uh, agency that's doing gambling in our city donates the 10% and that 10% according to state law would go to public safety, um, and then those funds would be there designated for public safety. That was voted down. So we don't have any policy that says it has to go one place or another. I guess what I would like to be able to see, and I'll move on, on Tuesday, is that we see where we're at with our donated funds, say over the last, starting in 2015, because when we've received funds, there's been times where we've said, let's, let's earmark this for this, or this, or this. So I'd like to kind of see where that is at before we determine, um, where the funds would come from to, um, pay for something of the sort. I'm not disagreeing that this is not a needed item, I understand the, the value in the item and, and the benefit it brings to our fire department, which then benefits our residents. And maybe I should bring forward my, uh, my, um, my idea of designating the funds to go to public safety, um, then we wouldn't have an issue. Maybe I'll do that.
Would you consider, Councilmember Rainville, in this case, proceeding with, with the one and the third of these donations? I, I do think, it's, it's one of those things, you, you want to be prepared and, and probably the getting this and needing it, um, versus needing it and not having it, makes, makes a huge difference out here. It, it is, um, because of our volunteer basis, the opportunity for the first engine to, to be spraying while people are coming, I, I think that there's certainly a benefit from it. I, I think it's reasonable to say where have our donations ended up, because there's going to be some other things when we get to recycling center and alike, where we're going to see where those funds are and what we have available, but I think, um, it's one of the things we've always, we have suggested it go to public safety, and, and as a city, we've always tried to put our public safety, uh, front and center. So I would like to, to see the chief's request honored here while pursuing the further investigation that you're talking about.
Mr. Mayor, I'm fine with that, and again, it's not that I'm against the purchase of this piece of equipment, that is not where I'm coming from, I just, again, we should, you know, if we had a policy in place, it would be a non-issue. If we had an idea of where our donated funds came from, what we thought we would use them for, that would be beneficial to us as a council. It would be interesting to even have a, an idea of where we are on the fire department funds, as far as what has been spent versus what's been budgeted.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rickert.
Number one, it should be a non-issue period, in my opinion. Number two, I agree that, yeah, we should have a handle on where are these funds come from. I have, agree with you 100%, we should know where these donated funds. Where I didn't agree with the motion that you brought up in the past was that we would specifically tell somebody that they had to give a minimum of a certain percentage, because in my opinion, as soon as I'm, I believe they're told, you have to give 10%, that's all we're going to get, we're not going to get anything above and beyond that. That's my opinion, I could be 100% wrong, but that's my feeling and my opinion. So I don't like the fact of stipulating to somebody, you have to give me a certain percentage of your profits. But again, I agree, we should have a handle on whatever donations come into the city, where those donations go.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
And I understand your concern, councilmember Rickert, but nonprofit organizations that are in the business of gambling, this is nothing new to them. There are cities that require all monies received in that city stay within that city. So 10% is the minimum you can ask for, and that is not anything that is new news to these nonprofits. There is, if you do that 10%, there is the stipulation by state law that it does have to go to public safety, and I'm fine with it going to public safety. I did try to do some research as to what do they include in public safety, because one of the things that I, I think is a public safety issue is our street signs, and we could have used money for replacing our street signs, then that would not come out of the taxpayers' dollars that could be used for this, because it's important that the fire department or the law enforcement can get down a street, they know where the street is, and they can see that sign. And again, to agree with you, to agree with me, that we do need to be able to track where our monies are going to. I have no idea what's in our donation checkbook right now, where it came from, you know, that's my fault, I haven't tracked every time we've had a donation, but I think that is something that we should be doing, and I will bring that forward on Tuesday.
Mr. Mayor. All donations that come in, unless you have a special place that one put it in, they all go to general fund.
I understand that.
So that's if you're asking where they're going, that's where they're going.
And I understand that, Corey, but again, a tracking of where they're coming from and what we're doing with that, when we received it, what's our thought process as to if we get $2,000 from Mr. Anonymous, what do we think we'd like to do with that $2,000? If there's no stipulation placed on the dollar amount from the donor, then where does the council think they'd like to use that money? And having a spreadsheet that tells us where that money's coming in from, when it's coming, how much, what our thoughts are, and then, did we expend the monies where we said we were going to, or did we change it for a different reason? Is it just going into the general fund doesn't tell me how much we have in donations and what we've spent on, so. And I understand the accounting piece of it, that it's one big checkbook, I get that. But because it's that one big checkbook, it is nice to have some separate little checkbook spreadsheets that tell you where monies are coming from and where they're going to.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bettinger.
Really, we're getting off on a tangent here, but I'll just say this, if you do that 10%, you'll have a hard time getting any other money out of Ramsey, other than that 10%, the Ramsey Lions, and I tell you what, they donate a lot of money to groups here, and now, we do hardship cases, anybody that gets, has cancer, kidney problems or anything, right now, the Ramsey Lions gives them a $3,000 donation to their families. A lot of times, they don't want their names, you know, we give to all the Boy Scout groups, the Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, we do food baskets a lot of residents in Northern, and I'd hate to see a lot of that in, but it will. You get that 10%, and that's going to be it.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
I guess that saddens me, councilmember Bettinger, because the goal of service organizations is to give back to their communities, and the communities and where they raise their funds, and for a member to say, if I have to give you 10%, then no one else that is unassociated with this at all would suffer because that's how they would do it, that's very disheartening to think that that's what a group would do.
Mr. Mayor. And we are off on a tangent.
One more thing.
Yeah.
So we need to.
Councilmember Rickert.
No, I said, we just wanted to get your attention. We are off on a tangent, so.
Yeah, so it's not germane to this, but at this point, the chief has asked for the $4,010, whatever it was there. If we don't have any disagreement, this particular debate on the 10%, the particular debate on tracking donations and their planned expenditures, I think it's good, let's set it up on a planned basis, and what I would like to recommend is that first discussion, Mary, that you go into the office and sit with Corey and start there, so that, we're not trying to flesh it all out here, I think the more we can, as Corey can accommodate us, try and get some of these things done at the office level, it would save a lot of time and confusion at the council level. But we start there and then see what council action is necessary, if any, after that.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
As long as then I'm not directing staff, because I don't want to be accused of that.
No, it would be having a discussion prior to coming to council. I think, you know, we've talked about looking at some of the RCAs, and we want to get things in early enough that staff has a chance to weigh in and say, we might have missed something, here's something that would improve this, or here's something we really can't do, you can ask for more. At least gives them a chance to respond before it comes up here. Council still wants to do it, you know, obviously we can direct staff, but I think we're going to be much more effective to try and get that details worked out first.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rickert.
Want to just bring up 1.8, the request for approval for the, of the farmer's market First, I want to go on record, I'm all for the farmer's market, think it's a good thing. The issue that I have, or question that I have is, it's my understanding that the farmer's market itself could easily be a self-sustained entity. They generate their own funds, they, and whatnot, they could pay their own invoices. So why are we having city staff having to manage this? And why are we having to go through the city, is my number one question.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
To councilmember Rickert, basically, it's insurance, the cost of the insurance.
Well, is there any way that we can, as a city, say that we'll cover them for insurance and let them do everything else on their own?
That would be a question to Corey.
Well, and again, I'll go on record over and over, I'm for the farmer's market, but the issues that I have are, we have an RCA presented in front of us, we have a budget, we have a budget for membership, Minnesota grown, and we have a line item for $376 for signs. I don't have any details for signs, I don't have any pictures for signs, I don't know, we need to make and have the exact same requirements that we have on everything else as this should as well. We have, there's a line item on there for $100 for spring meetings for pizza, why are we, you know, again, if this is all generated through the city, why are we paying, you know, approving a budget for $100 for pizza? We don't pay for that kind of thing for anything else. And again, I understand the fact that they generate their own money, and technically they're paying it all themselves, so again, why do we need to do it through the city?
To councilmember Rickert, Linda Clases was unavailable to come tonight, she will come Tuesday, I will make sure she has some answers to those questions. I know that with the signs, she's playing around with trying to design some signs that are lasting longer, she wants to do some aluminum ones that are permanently placed, and is working with Extreme Graphics on some pricing of them. I don't know if she has the actual graphics of it, but it would be Northern Farmer's Market Thursdays, you know, June to September, and the timeframes. I know that she also contacted, I recommended her to contact the Noka County Highway Department like we did for our land use signs, and the email she got back from the gentleman is they're too busy to look at it right now, so, because I said, we found we got a better deal going through that, and I know that, I think Corey was copied on an email, that the county said that somebody from Northern, because she's not an Northern employee, would have to do it. But I will have to address those, but one of the pieces is the insurance, and the insurance is quite expensive.
Well, and again, I'm all for the city providing that to them, but again, if we handle this the current way that we do now, in my opinion, we need to treat this exactly how everything else. There's a line item on here on chairs, what kind of chairs, who owns those chairs, where are those chairs, you know, again, back to the signs, my question, you brought up, you know, permanent signs, have we talked to the county, can we put a permanent sign somewhere?
Councilmember Rickert, let me clarify that, those permanent signs would go on personal property, one is on Twin Lakes, where it's no longer 22, but hits Twin Lakes, one's on Viking and 47, be connected to the posts that are there, and the other one is Bond 181st by Gordon's Gardens, and those are ones, because she has volunteers that go out and put those signs out every Thursday, pick them up, she's trying to come up with a manner that there are some more permanent signs during the season, so they're not ones that would go into the county right away, they'd be on personal property. And I've been trying to work with Linda, trying to get things better, I'm now retired, so I will have more time to work with her on it, but I understand your questions.
Yeah, and again, I would prefer, if we could do it where we could, the city could provide them insurance, and then they handle all the finances, everything on their own, it's much cleaner for us, you know, we don't have to have the staff worry about it, but if we can't do that for some legal reason, then again, anytime they present an RCA, we have, is exactly the detail that some scrutinize every other RCA with.
I understand completely.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bettinger.
Signs, 47 and 22, there's going to be a lot of signs there, and some of them don't look so well, some look all right. I don't know if all of them are businesses or even in Northern, but I know they're all on violation.
I don't think any of them are legal, are they?
No, but how we see, if we continue to put up signs, the Lions put one there, and now we have the hair to say add one, I'd prefer that it was a temp sign, so pull up and taken down, so we ever do get complaints that, because a temp sign is allowed.
It's going to happen sooner or later, you agree, they're not all Northern residents, and even ones that are Northern residents, I mean, it's not.
Some of them are even lit up now.
Yeah, and there's a pile, somebody did some cleanup there, and there's a pile of debris this high underneath them, I don't know if it's old signs or posts or what it is, but.
Oh, yeah, because they did the cleanup.
I see Liz about to take a note.
Well, Mary, correct me if I'm wrong, but when you meant permanent sign, you meant a sign that was up during the season but actually taken down.
Correct, correct, yes, no, no, I, permanent during the season, yes.
A seasonal sign, which there are limits to, isn't that the problem we had over here at the restaurants? Their seasonal signs went beyond their seasonal limits, so there are limitations to.
I will look at the number of days per year, temporary sign.
Temporary signs.
And I want to make one more point, I think the Northern Lions can carry insurance for an event like that, pretty reasonable. I know we used to be able to go online for all our events, thousands of Northern Lions, you could print off liability insurance.
To councilmember Bettinger, in order to do that, then the Northern Lions have to have Northern Lions participate in the event beyond premise, and there isn't always that guarantee, because the Northern Lions do, are gracious enough, when we do our spring breakfast at the church, we have one or two lions that work with us at that event, and they provide us that insurance, because for us, to purchase insurance for a one-day project like that, we wouldn't make any money. So they do do that, and there has been some, you know, high, not high level, just big picture discussion, but it's the issue that Lions have to be there on premise, and it would not be fair to not abide by that rule.
Every time I've been there, I saw them Lions.
But are they there acting as Lions, or are they acting as the market people?
Dardan King is a Northern Lion.
No, she is not.
Oh, she's dying.
No, she's not.
Well, Nick is, isn't he?
Nick is, will no longer be, but he's there as a market manager, so the people that have been there for, as, that are Lions, are there as representatives of the festival, or, excuse me, of the market, so.
Well, that's something you could ask as a group, they'd be willing.
We have, and there is not the interest, and one of the main reasons is because of the timeframe, you know, 99% of the Lions work, and they work till 5:00 at night, and that's just, so it has been asked and discussed.
And no double dipping?
No double dipping. Yes, T-shirts with one on the front, one in the back. Mr. Mayor, I have a question on the 1.4, the donation from the hockey association, and I know they said they would be making quarterly donations. Corey, do we know if this is, this dollar amount is just from one month as it shows, or did they say this is for the three months?
Just may have been mailed in.
Okay.
I can ask that.
Okay, it would just be interesting to know.
I know who runs that.
Yeah, I know, my niece has got one of my, I won $100 on the calendar.
That's a month, that's a pretty good business.
Well, that's what I was thinking, too.
Yeah.
Then why my association do so darn hard?
I'm just amazed when you look at the gross, how much is spent on, I'm not a poll cap person, I'm not like that gambler, just how much is spent on.
The, I think the farmer's market, the, are they just looking to have the money paid upfront so they're not going out of pocket? And then they pay back when they get their rentals from the stalls?
No, it's my understanding that when Linda receives deposits, she gives them to Corey, they go into the bank, sometimes she'll hold them a little bit, because there'll be a couple each week, because if you have ones that only come once a month, things like that, and then as Linda expends the dollars, then she asks for reimbursement. I don't know if she waits till the end of the market season to put in a reimbursement request or not.
So she's just saying, have this money there, and then she can spend up to that amount?
Mm-hmm, and it's my understanding that the dollar amount that she has there has been in line with what has been received from the vendors as far as their fees. One of the things I did ask Linda going forward, and she and I are going to work on it, is a budget that gives a history, going back, so each year you'll know what we, what the expenses were, what the revenues was, whether there were profit or loss, and then, so that it is more spelt out, so we have a better picture of it.
It's spelt out, you can work on general a little bit. It's been spelt out, you can work on general a little bit.
Oh, yes.
So easy to churn. Anything else on the consent agenda?
We received a copy of updated trail plans from the park.
Yeah, Liz said we did. I don't recall it though.
I don't know. I remember-
No, I think, I don't think you ever did see that.
No.
Well, the one note we got, it says-
Mr. Mayor.
Says she sent the changes earlier to the Park and Rec Committee and also to the City Council. That says on the RCA.
It could have been distributed by email, but-
I don't remember it.
Yeah, I don't think it's ever physically been printed for you at this meeting.
It'd be nice to see that.
Yeah, we have plenty of time. I mean, this will go in the com plan, of course, but we have plenty of time now with our extension.
Well, just in the, you know, in the consent agenda, Park and Trail Plan Updates for the Comprehensive Plan, it's just we're approving something to go into that before we've actually seen it.
It's just five goal items and then a map, so I could certainly get it to you tomorrow.
I would want that to be a separate item, because I would like to have discussion on that.
So then, and since we haven't had it yet, I would then say, let's take it out of Consent Agenda and let the Park and Rec know we'll table it till next month so we can actually have a chance to look at it. So let's pull that out of Consent Agenda and I would recommend moving to next month so we're just getting information. Do we have any problem with the change in dates? Council items. Deputy Clerk position. Need to have a struggle. Obviously, we haven't come to the council with a recommendation. We told you last time we were going to talk to some of the candidates about adjusting asking rates. One candidate was willing to adjust downward, but not to be anywhere close to what the city had agreed to offer. Another candidate did agree to come in with what the city would agree to offer. And there was a third candidate that was already in that bracket that isn't the choice of the committee. Paul and I had a discussion last week. Make six dollars an hour more. There was not enough there to make any recommendation to the council on that. We also have a difference of opinion on the two remaining candidates. One option was to see if there were people with similar skill sets and within the price range that are still available after all these months after applying and having been contacted. We did have three candidates put forward by Cory that she had called through all the submissions. And of those, we have disagreement on the two that are in the same price category. So the question is, we've got to move forward. One of those candidates is Ellen, who is currently serving in the position, and another candidate that is not. And hasn't met the council. Well, before interviewing them, Cory picked those three after interviewing those. The other candidate that I, that I thought might be in the running is not the preferred candidate that Cory would like to move forward with. So it's really up to the council. Paul and I have talked about seeing if there are other candidates in that pool. At this point, we've done three interviews, the top three candidates that Cory selected of that pool. So rather than go back through that exercise, I want to just put it out to the council. Do you want to proceed with the recommendation of some of the committee? Would you want to proceed with, again, my recommendation wouldn't be for the more expensive candidate, but would you want to proceed with talking to the other two candidates? Or do you want to start over with a different committee?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rickard.
And I'll say it again. We originally voted, you know, to basically form a hiring committee to, or recommend body. You know, two to three, you know, do we take, you know, with that recommending body, do we take a vote? And does two out of three then, you know, trump the one? There is a candidate that two of the three of us think will fit the position that we posted for. And at the rate that we originally agreed upon. And then there's another candidate that two of the three didn't think would fit in for different reasons. So again, my perspective, and I told the mayor the same thing, is none of us have to work with these individuals, you know. It's up to Cory. If it were honestly up to me, I wouldn't have any issues with Cory saying, you know, I have five people, I interviewed three, you know, I really like one, I'd like that person to come meet the council and get their approval. She's the one who has to work with them. She has to train them. In my opinion, the decision, and final decision for the most part, should be hers, unless there's something glaring and obvious to the council that that individual couldn't do the job that we posted for. Which I think any one of the three candidates we interviewed could do the job that we posted for. So I'm frustrated because I've tried to, I've exhausted a lot of effort trying to push this forward. And to see where we're at right now, it's, you know, it just baffles me.
Mr. Mayor.
Ryan.
I would think if there was a committee that was unanimous, then that would be something to look forward, to look into going forward with. But if there isn't a unanimous vote, if the decision's not unanimous among the hiring committee, then there, then other options may need to be looked at, whether it be getting more information to the council to say, hey, here's who our candidates are, which, and this is why I would recommend going forward with this one, or this is why I would recommend going forward with this one. And to see where the best fit is, because it's not just for city staff, it's also who's gonna, who's going to be, because they are also going to be representing the city. So I have a challenge, because I don't have, I don't have a lot of information on either candidate, all three candidates, other than my conversations that I've had with Ellen. And I would like to get more information that, at that point, if there is an impasse on the existing candidates to determine who would be the best fit for the city.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bettner.
We formed a committee to do this, and I think if the majority of the committee, it doesn't have to be unanimous. We're not, as a council, we're never, a lot of times we're not unanimous. Majority typically rules. And I think if we have somebody that's, it sounds like they're all qualified. If we have somebody that's qualified, that would meet within our pay scale and the majority of the committee wants that, they should move forward with that, in my opinion. We need to, you know, this has been, what, six months, six, eight months? We need to get moving. We need to get somebody in, we had elections coming up.
Starting on the fifth month. We took applications into January.
Well, I mean, since Lori's left, the position's been vacant. I'm not talking about just the hiring process. But we have elections coming up and stuff. We need to get somebody in here and get them trained. There's typically, maybe it's already passed, there's clerks training in the spring and stuff, they probably already missed that.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainbough.
I, again, without a consensus from the committee that interviewed people, without having seen or talked to the candidates, I would have a difficult time determining which candidate is the best fit for the city. Will bring the city forward and allow the city to grow in how we provide services to our residents. I don't know the skill sets of anyone. I don't know what they've done before. And I would like to be able to see that, and I know I've asked for that and for, you know, legitimate reasons have not received it. But it would be, I would have a hard time picking a candidate, because I want to make sure that we're not going through this in another year. And that whatever candidate we choose is the best candidate for the city and that that candidate then is allowed to use their skill sets to bring the city forward in the services that we provide to our residents.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rickard.
And again, none of us have to work with this individual, number one. And if Cory's recommendation is for one over the other, that to me should weigh more than a lot of other things, especially if both, if we believe both candidates are capable of doing the job. What sits and eats at my craw and just sits in the back of my mind is the fact that when the one individual that the mayor's pushing for hard, one of the first comments she made out of her mouth was that she was friends with Mark Corn, the mayor of Oak Grove, which happens to be the mayor's boss. So to me, is, there's something that doesn't sit well with me, that you're pushing so hard for her, is there some other underlying reason? And regardless of what you're going to say and spin your tail here, it's going to eat at me. And again, Cory and I were in full agreement, there was just something about this individual that I felt right off the bat would not fit in with our environment and our office. And it's a gut feel. I've always trusted my gut. And for Cory to say that she had that same gut feeling tells me something. So then, and again, I don't see any advantage what this person has over the other candidate, other than this. And Jeff, you had not once ever really told me what the other candidate can and can't do that it's pushing you so hard towards the other ones.
Well, I think we had a discussion the other day, I did mention.
No, but you haven't told, you're speculating. You made the comment that the other candidate is coming out of a different environment and their background is different. But you have no idea what her capabilities are. You have no idea what she can learn, how fast she can grow and do anything. You're speculating all that because of what she did in the past. She's already told us, and Cory's already told us, that things that she's already doing now, above and beyond what Lori was doing, that she wasn't even asked to do. So are you going to handicap somebody because, you know, they were, their background isn't as exact as the other person or the other person has more business background? When we really have no clue on what either one of these persons' work ethic is or what their capabilities can be? That's what you're doing, in my opinion.
Well, obviously, in an interview process and in her, you know, looking at resume, and you mentioned that resumes don't tell you everything about a person. You've seen good resumes and not such good employees, and I've seen some pretty weak resumes and pretty good employees. So resume isn't everything. It wasn't the first thing out of her mouth. It was when I was probing her political activity. How politically active is she going to be? Because she mentioned on her references that she had been involved with promoting political candidates and political things. And so I just want to know if she was still active in that, is that something that we need to be concerned about? Because we prefer our staff not to be political. She did mention that she followed Mark Corn or had been on his Facebook.
No, that's not what she said. She was friends with Mark.
On Facebook.
No, that's not what I wrote down on my piece of paper.
That's what I wrote down, because it surprised me, because that's not where I would assume that, because when I saw the resume, that's where she would have been going with that. But, you know, whether that would affect me because Mark's my boss, that's, you know, a bigger issue with our detachment annexation than anything here. You know, my, and I told you my concern was when we had the one question, you know, what question do you have for us as the interviewing committee to come back and be upgraded on the lack of trust and not following whatever our committees say? Our committees aren't perfect. Our committees aren't always, just because they make a recommendation, is the council going to follow? But it concerned me to have that attitude in, you know, already. That there was already a, I call it toxic, attitude towards the council, and she hadn't even worked with us yet. And that was a concern. But bigger concern was the conversation we had about, originally, the growth of the city. And we sat with Cory and talked about the growth of the city, and she said, we're not growing right now, that's not a big deal. But I do think, as we're trying to manage some of what Liz does, what Andy does, what Shane does, within the confines, we've talked about it for years. How can we bring that skill set into the office so we can do more internally and expand that? And I just, in my opinion, in the interview, was we have more capabilities there with one candidate over the other. I saw one as a good clerical person. And as we grow, we're certainly going to need that as well. But to me, somebody that can assist Cory on a higher level is important as we move forward.
But you don't know that. You're speculating. You have no clue on what their capabilities can and cannot be. You just made the comment that one you see as a good clerical. You have no idea what her true capabilities could or cannot be.
And it's true, until somebody's been in the job for a period of time, we won't know until the proof's in the pudding.
She's already shown us stuff that she's done above and beyond what Cory's asked her to do and things that she's already done above and beyond what Lori was doing to organize and try to get things, you know, to run more efficient within the city and within the office. She's already showed us that. But yet, you're pigeonholing with her and saying that the only thing that she can do is clerical.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainbough.
I guess if Councilmember Rickard is saying that, could we have proof to that in what she has done over and above supposedly what Lori was doing?
I'm sure she can. Cory could contest to that.
And again, that goes back to my question of, we don't have any information and there isn't consensus. There was consensus when Lori was hired. The committee, all three agreed on Lori. And it's a shame that we're going through this process at this point. We should have been able to still have Lori here. But with the fact that there is no consensus, I have no idea of any of the skill set, any, anything of these people. I guess I'm, it would be difficult for me to vote, but I surely am not going to vote to take a less- but I surely am not gonna vote to take a lesser of two. And I don't mean anything disrespectful to either, any of the candidates, but I want the person that will be allowed to move us forward. And I, I wanna make sure that that person that's hired met our initial requirements. And it is unfair to other candidates that, that there is a temporary incumbent there that does put them at an advantage that in the majority of hiring, you don't have that. Everybody is coming in off the street. It's a position that they're all coming into. And so again, I, without information, I'm, it's difficult, but I am not interested in going backwards or standing still.
But you also have to consider how that individual's gonna fit into the environment. And that's a big key. And again, if, if their direct supervisor is saying that they could already see potential issues, that's a red flag, huge red flag. And again, that's the person who has to work with that person on a daily basis. So right now, in my opinion, we're telling staff that we could give a rat's ass on their opinion. And we don't, their opinion doesn't matter. We're gonna hire whoever we think we want just because this is why we like 'em and staff can go to whatever, because we don't care what their thoughts are. That's what we're saying.
And Councilmember Rickert, as cruel as that sounds, that's our prerogative as a council.
But it shouldn't be. We keep talking about, we wanna work with staff and we wanna more effective, efficient office and we want everything to work well, but yet, we're not gonna work with them and we're not gonna trust them? That's bullshit, if you ask me.
And, and Councilmember Rickert, we, we did go with what Cory, was one of the three that voted for Lori, to hire Lori. And with great expectations. And for whatever reason, Lori was not, not allowed to, not, for whatever reason, Lori was not able to do what she could have done.
Because, number one, we, I've talked to Lori several times after she's left. One of the biggest reasons she left is because the way we treat staff. And Jeff can contest to the whole conversation that we had after the fact, that, that was the main topic that we talked about for over an hour, is how the council handles staff and interacts with staff. It's had nothing to do with what we allowed Lori to do or what Lori didn't or did not do. It was how we treat staff.
And I beg.
Which you're not aware of those either. So I had a conversation with her, Jeff and I had a meeting with her. So again, that meeting went, plain and simple was how the council treats staff. That was one reason why she decided to leave, and her main reason. And, you know, we went in there trying to use it as an exit interview to find out what skill sets we need, and none of that came up. It's all, majority all about how we treated staff.
Well, the first hour. Second hour was different.
What was the second hour?
Second hour was more the specifics. The, kind of the questions we had coming in, that, you know, the toxic environment was, was a big factor in it. The, the growth opportunity, you know, when St. Francis approached her, you know, they had a growth plan, they had a, you know, growth plan budget-wise, growth plan experience-wise, you know, where, where she could be in one, three, and five years. There was some organization there that, that was missing here.
And the $5 an hour and Fridays off didn't hurt either.
Didn't hurt. She, she said that wasn't her main motivator, but that certainly didn't hurt.
That it was a big plus.
And more staff with more opportunities to, to move up. We're pretty small here. Pretty hard to move up in here, a staff of two.
I've been putting, I've put in a ton of hours into both Lori initially, in all the interviews when we hired Lori, in conversations with Lori, you know, after she's departed, with the interview process now. And again, it just appalls me how we, as a council, just are throwing out staff's opinion completely. And I can, I know exactly where this is going and where this is headed. And I'll write it down today and we'll see exactly what happens and I'll show you.
You've said it before, I think you don't give the council members enough credit. I don't know that, that if there was another interview, I wouldn't change my mind.
I'm telling you, Jeff, I'll, I'll write it down tonight and I'll tell you exactly what happens and I'll show you that paper.
You know, if, if there's something I missed that you guys picked up on so quickly, I would trust the rest of the council to do the same. It was a middle interview? I, I remember commenting walking out, that I thought we had good candidates there. I didn't realize that, that, I guess at that time you said, "What'd you miss on this last one?"
And, and again, regardless of all that, we're throwing her opinion right out the door. Her opinion does not mean anything to you. Plain and simple. You might as well just say it.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Ryan.
Having hired people in the past, you, you can take that input when you're, when you're hiring people, but in the end, the hiring decision is using that as input and that's not necessarily a 100%, this is the exact person that you need to hire. I'm, I'm at a loss because I'm hearing things that I'm not privy to, that I'd like to get, certainly like to get more information on, and can't right now. So I have a, I, I can't make a decision right now because I'm hearing pros and cons for one person and I'm hearing pros and cons for another. So it's gonna be very difficult to make a decision based on that. I mean, like if...
And again, regardless of all that, exactly what I said. You're not considering her opinion at all.
That's your opinion, that it's not being considered.
Well, if you, if two to three of us have somebody we would recommend and one differs, and Cory's opinion goes along with the majority, and you're saying you don't wanna go with the majority, you want to make your own opinion, you're throwing your opinion out the door.
I'm saying if, if the council as, in general, has hiring authority, then I, as a council member, need more information.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Raina.
And I agree with Councilmember Brian. I, I need more information before I can make a, take a vote.
Mr. Mayor.
Leonard Stockman.
Um, I would be very willing to share my opinions. And I have to say that it does take a certain kind of person to be in a small office like that. And it's pretty obvious that there is not move-up potential. But I do believe we could find some, many things that Ellen is doing very well.
Thank you. Old Viking Boulevard, assessment options for larger parcels.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Raina.
I went there after my emails and I, I was thinking we had received, or maybe it was, I may have dreamt it, that we got something from the attorney that talked about how we could treat these parcels, these larger parcels. Am I correct in that or is my dreaming? Because all I have is this map and I was thinking we had, we provided some options as far as how we could assess the bigger parcels.
Mr. Mayor.
Leonard Stockman.
Uh, well, my recollection is that most of the conversation revolved around who actually would front on Old Viking and, you know, what percentage. Some of these lots of butt, you know, like the salt, for instance, or another side street. I guess, yeah, I don't recall specifically what the attorney, Rudy, said either.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rickert.
I would like to just move along with what we originally planned and just assess individual properties regardless of the size. Because, you know, we got, we got a map here where Swanson has five lots. Well, Schwartz has four to five lots. We don't know based on partially wet, you know, it just, I think we're muddying things up myself. But, you know, and again, this, this all would be, you know, we can't assess them, we're not getting any funds for the project specifically at the time of the project. It's potential funds that we could possibly get X amount of years down the road. You know, so we have to obviously somehow manage, you know, to find, list these properties, find out, you know, down the road, how many, if they split 'em, what road it comes, the lot comes out on. You know, it, again, it just, to me, muddies things up a lot.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Ryan.
I was kinda looking at the same thing and I'm, and I'm going, yes, we could get future revenue. It's not included to pay for the project, but it also could be used as a, it also could be thought of as a hindrance for developing now or splitting off now. And I, I'm just wondering if you, you know, I could go either way, but, you know, that, that would certainly be a reason just to not, to not worry, not worry about it and move ahead and if, if these site places are interested in developing sooner than later, that, that means more, more residents and that can live in the city.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Benjamin.
I, I kinda agree with the both of them, that the deferments kinda make things messy and harder on employees here, and you do get very little money back on them. Somebody has to develop. And when we did do it in the past, this is when we went from a gravel road to a blacktop road. So there was some real, they did gain something, they did develop. Here, they're already on a blacktop road. So they're, they're really not gaining, they're getting a better blacktop road, but that's it.
Mr. Mayor.
Leonard Stockman.
Yeah, I would agree, the, it's hard enough to put in a street to these larger lots, you know, with a five-acre lot size and make it all work financially. So I'm, I would, in my opinion, just from what I hear from people wanting to subdivide and everything, you know, it's kinda tough to make it work already without that, without the burden of an assessment.
Right, so I'm hearing no enthusiasm for changing. We considered assessment options and chose to proceed with what we have? All right? Recycling center quote for box minute over hang.
Mr. Mayor, um, I just wanted to address the one picture that gets sent over. Is, what I was told is that it wouldn't have the fascia that was showing.
Oh, that one, that one.
The fascia here, it wouldn't have a gutter, it's all, it would all come to a point. He just sent this picture to kinda give a general idea.
So you can see what it looked like from the side.
Exactly.
So this was meant to be existing?
No, it's.
Oh, it's just, you couldn't see the, the angle there?
Yeah.
So he said, "You gotta show us what this looks like, because on that one, you can't see this box." It's declared a box and you can't see what this looked like in that picture, or that memory. So if it doesn't have the fascia here, is that?
It just comes to a point.
Oh, okay.
And he did say that it works to plan together, so it would be a one.
But he still had the little snow deflectors up there, I assume? It didn't help much.
Basically, the roof is doing this now. You're putting something on the end above the north door so the snow goes sideways instead of straight.
No, it's still gonna go straight down, but away from the doors. Right now, it, it dropped right on the doors and froze. So we couldn't use those doors. We can't get the plow in there, and the only way would be open the doors before it freezes and shove it out where you can get the, the snow moving equipment. So by bringing it out four feet, it drops it away from the building. Still gonna drop it in front of the doorways, that gives them a chance to clear it out.
Oh, so it's just extending the roof line, basically?
Yeah. Roof line right now is flush with the wall.
Okay, got it.
And that's what Joe realized when he couldn't get the doors open, that we have to do something different. Being the price of this, he would also have liked an overhang in the back because it drops down and runs into the building. We have two problems. The, the concrete that was put in there years ago wasn't meant to run away. And so where we put the, the new addition, the water runs in from the parking area underneath the building to where the, the containers are. So we've gotta figure out some way to keep the water from coming in. On the south side, Joe was talking about maybe putting asphalt there and canting it away, kind of putting a gutter there so it doesn't run into the building, runs down a way. You can't run it completely south because that's where your septic is. But running it back to what will be fenced in. And then what's, in the fenced-in area has to be sealed up so it doesn't run underneath the sheet metal into the storage area. The cold storage, it just freezes things down, so. Now, that's the quote, and obviously, May 1st came and went, so it's now 6696. But secondary problem is, Oak County Services has denied us a $30,000 grant that we were expecting to get because it became a full-service center. They changed the rules this year. And in our application, that went before the committee, they denied us the extra funds.
Right.
I don't know who's getting them, you know, other people that aren't becoming full service are getting extra funds and I'm not exactly sure why. So it's something that we need to still take up with our commissioner and with the representatives from the, who made, who made the decision to change it and why, when we go out and extend ourselves like this, to be surprised that we no longer qualify for the extra funds, which was a big part of the motivation to take in all of product. So Cory has informed them, correct me if I'm wrong, but without those extra funds, we likely won't be able to take in all the things we said we're going to. We won't be able to take in carpeting and mattresses and the extra things that a full-service center does. Unless the county changes their mind or re-evaluates our grant request, then money might all be gone at this point. The only other option is find it somewhere else in the budget later in the year before winter comes and hope that steel doesn't go up three times between now and then. I think we need to do something. The other option is, is the county in years past has come up with additional funds in the fall when they realized their money wasn't all spent. And it's possible that we could get something at that time to put this on. But right now, we don't have a funding source for it. It's needed, we just have to figure out a funding source. One is to see what the county may do in response to this initial request. Second is find somewhere else, third is hope that there's more money by the county come fall. Am I missing anything? So, any additional discussion on that?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Raina.
I, I, it, it's too bad that that, this issue wasn't, that this was gonna be an issue wasn't noticed when we were doing our, I mean, the plans and when our building official looked at it. That you have a north-facing building, snow come down. official looked at it, that you have a north facing building, snow come down. And there weren't provisions in the initial construction. It's a shame. Or that the building contractor didn't say their expertise, years and years of doing this.
Yeah, you know, it, it did come up in our previous expansion there because we did put the gabled roof over the doors for exact reason. So things as people are coming, going, aren't coming off the roof on them and it doesn't pile up in front of there. You know, as, as Jim presented these plans to us a couple of years ago, because we had them professionally done, we didn't think about a north facing door with a flush roof. And obviously this, we were exposed. So it is unfortunate with the professionals that were involved that this wouldn't, wouldn't have been identified. All right. Contracted street sweeping.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
I'm wondering if, so because, is it possible for Tuesday's meeting to have where we are with the recycling budget provided to us so we can look at what monies we have, what we've, who we have left?
All right. Street sweeping. Six hundred and ten dollars due. Two hundred and tenth Avenue Cobalt and two hundred and fifteenth.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
I don't know if it's the person who have, it says we've had several complaints. I know I've, I've received a couple of them over the years. And I would be in agreement to go, going out and sweeping the, the street, contracting with OnCall to go sweep that area.
I thought you were in your retirement volunteering to do it yourself.
Rank it all out. I'd have to finish mine first.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bettinger.
Two hundred and tenth is just a rural section road and in the past, it's just been swept with our gondor tractor, the room in the front, which is acceptable. I mean, it's all the requirements by the watershed and ACDE and Bowls or so on, PCA. So that's fine to do. Two hundred and tenth, I think that's curb and gutter. That's supposed to be picked up and we got that small room. I think that can do that. So I think our city crews can do this on their own. I think the complaint was the people just don't want the sand swept off into the grass area or into the ditch along the road. But I don't, I don't see a problem with that.
So which, which one is they can sweep it up?
Two hundred and fifteenth is that Morton Farm Preserve. That has curb and gutter. So that, you got to use a pickup room. We got that small tent and that's the way it's been done in the past. You got to pick that stuff up. Otherwise, it goes into your storm sewer and stuff, which goes into the waters of the state and they don't want that. Why then you got to clean the structures out too? But your rural sections, you can just sweep the dirt off the road and that's acceptable.
I'm not sure the tenant can quite keep up with all of it.
The tenant would just do your curb and section, your curb and gutter section roads, not all of your roads. It's not that many. Two hundred and fifteenth is just probably quarter mile, half mile. Top forty-seven hundred, that's the PUD.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rickert.
Yeah, my, my concern is if we, if we do this here, kind of can of worms are we opening up?
Yeah.
I'm going to call and complain. I want my road swept because there's a lot of sand and stuff on it.
Well, get yourself some curbs and gutters. Well, again, they're not all. Will you pay the assessment on that?
It's, that's not all curb and gutters. So that's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
It'd be nice to roller blade on the road, but it's too dirty. I can't. Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bryan.
Yeah, I, I think the challenge would be setting his precedent for getting a sweeper. I could see it'd be different depending on how your house is laid out, whether the sand can just go in the ditch or some places where if you meticulously mow your grass and your grass goes right up to the road, that you may or may not want the sand in there. But given with what we have, I would think if, we could theoretically give the tenant a workout. And I don't, I don't, I mean, other than buying a whole new giant sweeper to do all the city streets, so in situations like that, you know.
Is this something they can push into a pile and shovel into a truck?
There's, there's not that much out there and.
I mean, if the tenant can do it, that's fine. We.
But the tenant, you, you don't need to do it in the rural section. You're better, we haul, typically we shoulder these roads. We're hauling gravel out there and dumping on the side. Why, why haul, utter and pick up material and haul it away and then haul more material back in? I mean, it's just a, it's just a little bit of sand. I live on the road, two hundred and ten. This is my road. It's, I mean, when they do it, you get dust in your mailbox. Next grant comes along.
The county gets dust in my mailbox every day.
Yeah, we started doing this. You're opening up a can of worms and it's going to get real costly in a hurry. We don't have the money for it.
You'd rather put the money into patching holes than.
Yeah.
All right. Seems to be consensus on that. All right. Well, might as well stay on the roll here. Councilmember Rainville.
Mr. Mayor, um, I, and I was hesitant to bring this forward, but I believe that there was a difference in how two council members were treated in, in information. We all know that Councilmember Bettinger wrote a memo that a memo accused me of doing something. I replied back to that memo. I thought that was, it was the end of it. And then when I get a packet and Councilmember Bettinger's memo was in that packet, and my response wasn't, and given that Councilmember Bettinger's memo was not even, was not on the agenda, there was no real reason to put that in there. I just feel I was treated differently and I would like to have my response be part of the official record because I believe that that's the way, that, that I want to be treated the same as Councilmember Bettinger was.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rickert.
You know, I, I kind of take issue to this fact that RCA is a request for council action, you know, and I think we're starting to use these forms in however we want to use them. And we, certain individuals use them for however they want to use them and in my opinion, not the proper way. You know, you look at this one in particular, you know, the RCA form has an agenda item, a department, request, date, by whom. This one has none of that.
Well, I didn't realize that. Didn't come through.
You know, so, and, and for me, if, if I have a beef with, say, Dan, for example, I'm just going to fill out this so it gets, gets in the, you know, that's what, to me, it's, it is. And, you know, I understand what you're saying, Mary, as far as, but, you know, to go to this extent and it, it just, I don't know, it just floors me, I guess.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
I apologize. I didn't realize that that top piece wasn't on there. Must have been when I was formatting because it was on when I was doing it. So I apologize for that. The only way for me to get my response entered into public record is to get approval by council. So that's a request for council action. I'm asking council to agree to have my response put into public record. I believe that I have the right to have my explanation included as, because Councilmember Bettinger's was included in that packet and especially given it wasn't a topic on the agenda.
Exa- exactly. Mine, I didn't ask to be accurate. That was just a memo.
Okay.
And I asked it to be sent out. Now, you've done the same and yours was sent out with a packet. You finally, all you do is clarify your, your request and you, you did, or testing an email, so then it was sent out.
Okay. Well, that's what this was. So that'll go into, to, to the record. But without me doing this, how do I get it into the record? It's up to then Cory to decide if she wants to put it in there.
No, do a memo and ask her to look at it. Do a memo and ask it to be sent to the council and send it out with a packet.
So you specifically asked for your memo to go out in the packet?
Yes.
And, and for what reason, being it wasn't added to the agenda?
Because it was my response to what was in the, the minutes from the month before.
But yet we didn't have it on the agenda as a topic to discuss. How often do we receive?
There was nothing to act on.
How often do we?
What were we supposed to act on? Say, yes, he was right, or no, he wasn't, or she was right, she's right. Let's move on. We had a meeting a little over a year ago that everybody worked together, but it ain't working very well, is it?
Well, when I'm accused of doing something I didn't.
I can see why staff gets a little hesitant or get nervous. It's like Joe had approval to move ahead with dust control and crack seal. And he's so damn nervous, he didn't want to do anything because he's afraid of repercussions.
Well, that's not, I don't have any control over Joe.
Oh, we do.
But I, again, this was my ability to get my response to your accusation in the public record like you did. So, thank you. But I would ask council to support.
And if that's going to be on the agenda, then I'm going to have a very long response next Tuesday, believe me. If that's going to be on the agenda.
Well, it's on the agenda right now.
You open up.
It can be removed.
We're going to start debating the raises and the, the reviews that still aren't done yet today. You're opening all up.
Councilmember Bettinger, I responded to an accusation that you made.
But again, you got to get some thicker skin. This is ridiculous. Where, where at times, just, no. There are times where you come up to the floor, in, in open floor items, you get out of your chair and you have to talk at floor items. We're public officials. We got, we, we signed up for this. We need to get some thicker skin and we, if somebody says, hey, whatever, take it. You don't need to have a response for every, it just drives me nuts. You, you know, you're going after Dan and then after Dan made a comment, then you had to go back after him again. You're the one who started it. You're the one who broke the code of conduct by calling him out and saying he's a liar, but yet you have to respond to everything that anybody else says negative to you. Get some thick skin and just take it and we don't have to go through this crap over and over again.
And Councilmember Rickert.
It's just ridiculous.
Okay. And Councilmember Rickert, when somebody accuses me of something I did not do, it's not that I don't have thick skin. I have plenty of thick skin, but I am not going to allow somebody to accuse me of something I did not do. And this is, he has, this is his second time doing it. The other was just handled via email, which is how this original memo from Councilmember Bettinger should have been handled. It was not a topic on the agenda. It should have just been between council. Yes, it's public information. Anybody can have it. But I guess if somebody stood up there and lied about you, if you choose to let them do that, that's your choice. But I am not going to stand and allow somebody to accuse me of something I did not do.
But you're saying.
And when I had, and when I said something wrong last week, last month, what did I do? I apologized to staff on, on the floor because it was the right thing to do. I accused Dan Williams and there's, there's documentation of the things that I accused Dan Williams of.
You point blank came out and called him a liar in a public forum.
I said, I said he was untruthful and dishonest and he was. He was. And there's documentation to show it. This issue is that I was accused of something.
And again, if you read the fricking code of conduct, you're not supposed to do that.
I'm supposed to.
But yet you're violating the code of conduct. Read it once. See what it says. You're not supposed to break any of the committee members, any of staff in any public forum, but yet you continually do it over and over and over again.
And, and have you ever talked to Mr. Williams about what he does during floor items? I'm sure you've never yelled at him like you just did me. So it, it's, I, I asked the council about.
How would you know that? You're speculating. I talked to Dan after that meeting and I said, you can't do that. So you have no idea what I may have, may not have said to Dan after the meeting. The difference is you're in a higher position than he is. You need to follow it first and foremost. Set an example, but yet you can't do that.
All right. I think we're done with that. You wanted this on record. You felt it was stated before we went on record because it was part of the packet. And via council item or Mr. Bettinger, do you want that debated on Tuesday?
It's her request. It's up for her if she wants it on there.
Can it get moved to council consent agenda?
Then it should be filled out properly.
I will provide the top piece of that. I apologize for that.
I, I do agree that, I think as a council, we should keep it two council items. Obviously, if there's no action to be taken, if it's clarification, a, a memo should suffice. I mean, Councilmember Rickert, that we, we need to keep these to the business at hand, what the request of the council is. Councilmember Rainville, if you feel that's the, the only way you're getting onto the record, again, let's, let's try the memo and see. Attempt to do that first. If for some reason the memo doesn't get through, then bring it up to council. I submitted a memo, it didn't get it through. But let's keep the, I would prefer to keep the request for council actions to council actions. Finally, almost, special meeting to approve plans and specs for old Viking Boulevard adopt resolution. Right now, it's tentatively scheduled for May 15th. Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rickert.
I will not. But I'll give you my vote as of right now as a yes.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, type of a shade, it would be just like you would be doing with the Pinnacle Lake Estates. It's just going to be quick meet, have a special meeting. And the reason why is because if we push it up into June, then that just pushes it out another month to have to go up a bit. So if we just have a quick meeting right before the road bridge meeting.
All right. Everybody else okay except for Councilmember Rickert?
So say six forty-five.
Hmm, let's just six thirty, just to make sure that we're wrapped up before.
Okay.
Is that right with everybody? Six thirty?
Yes.
With the, the Pinnacle. So we need to get back to the gal who wrote the memo. Mr. Mayor.
There's a resolution on Pinnacle though that we can vote on too, correct, on for Tuesday?
Yeah. Yep. I'm just saying that, you know, she, she had a specific complaint.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bryan. I can email her if that's what we'd want to do to at least have a conversation with her about the roads.
All right. And there's one new item, an RCA on employment policies.
Mr. Mayor.
Review and comment in a future. Councilmember Rainville.
Yeah. Councilmember Bryan and I went through what we currently have as policy and then looked at the working draft that previous council had almost gotten to the very end on and then we didn't continue with our, our sessions. And so what is in here is the working draft that had been approved by the previous, a previous council. There's changes in red, some new changes in green, and then the existing administrative.
There's changes in red, some new changes in green, and then the existing administrative policies that we're working under. And to the best of my knowledge, all of the items that are in the existing administrative policies were updated January 2016 are included into the working draft copy. And so I would just like council to look through those. If you have any questions or concerns, forward them to Cory, and then we can address them at the June council meeting.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Bryan?
I was just going through the old policy, and I knew that there was a draft that hadn't been approved yet, and when I looked at, went through the old one, there just, to me, there, you know, there were some, still some references to town board and those kind of things that was going, well, it'd be nice to clean those up, and so that's why I went, let's see if we can get that one, get the updated policy and finalize and going forward.
All right.
So this was the draft that was just sitting out there right now? And then the green stuff was just some stuff that was added?
Who added the green stuff?
The green stuff are items that after conversations, Dan and I have included. Or they were taken.
The two of you added the green items?
Yeah, or some of them were taken from the existing policies, too, so try to mirror them, so that we would just have one set of policy.
And the red was what, Mr. Mayor?
The red is back from when the previous council was looking at it. So there is some duplicate, duplicate verbiage in there about, like, Bob checking on things, there were legal issues, and, and I know that he's, he got back to us on, I'm thinking all of it, I just have to find responses in my emails from them. I don't know if Cory would have those at her disposal easier than me, I don't know.
I might have time to get through this by end of May. We have the, we have the con plan meeting coming up, and a couple of watershed meetings coming up, we have.
How'd the watershed go on Tuesday?
It was quite lengthy and good debates. I think our budget's going to go up. Bowser and ACD is pushing that we have temporary staff that can answer day-to-day questions, attend some of the city council meetings. So we've got to get her done, they ain't going to approve it without. Thinking temporary staff will probably work at least 120 hours a year, which isn't a real lot, but depending on who that is. The estimate was anywhere from eight to $20,000. That would almost double our budget.
And that helps the city, huh?
Don't.
Helps Bowser.
It could, I mean, that water base funding, there is a lot of grant money out there, and because we don't have a plan, we're not eligible. Top of the River, if we would have had our plan done, we would have been eligible for almost $120,000 for projects. It could be city projects, it could be the watershed projects, or. So I had Cory forward you, I think, the list of different projects that have been brought up by Bowser, ACD, other cities, so if we go through that, if we still have that, go through that list, if you see any projects that you definitely want in the plan, that we may want to get funding for in the future. Or we can think of some projects that you may want funding for, let us know in the plan, because they have to be in the plan to be eligible for grant funds.
Councilmember Bettinger, clarify for me, when you say they want temporary staff, that the city itself hire a person, or Bowser wants to hire temporary?
No, Top of the River, they want Top of the River to have something, have a staff person that would.
They want a watershed, too.
And then the cities would, the cities would share that cost.
And go to council meetings.
Okay, I just didn't.
It'd be go back, that's our percentage.
I just, when you said it could double, I'm thinking, so are we?
I keep telling them, I don't know why, that's neat, because most of the people that are serving that committee hire councilmen, so the cities know what's going on. We don't need somebody from ACD or.
Come out and tell us.
To come over and tell us what's going on.
The recycling day is this week, council's still participating in that?
I believe so.
Do you all believe that?
Well, I've always believed it.
I'll try to make it, I don't watch football.
I got to check my athletic schedule.
I was looking at what we had in our newsletter, I got this, I got Oak Grove and I got Ramsey, I don't know why they both think that I'm in their cities.
I'm getting all the pins and stuff from Ramsey.
Do we have any published spot other than our fee schedule, what our fees are? I couldn't find it on the website.
Separate, I think there's a separate, that the part of the fee schedule that's in the code was that specific thing was taken out, so I believe that there's a separate fee schedule.
Where would I find it? Because I've, I got, and we're going to try and get our light bulbs, Oak Grove, they were cheaper than we are, but they've already had their, they were last week. Ramsey's a little higher, but they got a lot of free stuff.
Bowser says it's five hundred dollars.
Ramsey's are a dollar and two dollars. Oak Grove is 50 cents, but there are people picked up right away, so.
Are we going to adjourn so I can start picking up?
We'll do adjourn.
Is, who's handling the funds for recycling?
I will staff the desk, and, so I will come in tomorrow, Cory?
Yeah, Ellen already redid the form.
Okay.
Totally, so it's, I don't need to, but it's idiot group.
Sounds good to me.
Yeah.